Good evening, members of the Menlo Park community. This is the Planning Commission meeting for October 5, 2020. We have present with us tonight five commission members and hope to have a sixth in short order. I will call the role and if the commission members would come on video so that I can, or so that we can verify presence and starting in alphabetical order in this case would be, well, I'll call Mr. Barnes, although we understand he may be a few minutes late. All right, and the next would be Mr. DeCarty. Present and Mr. Doran. Present and Mr. Kale.
I'm here.
Hello, Ms. Kennedy. Good evening, and I am Henry Riggs, your Chair. Michelle Tate will be absent tonight. Our first item is always reports and announcements, and may I, may I ask Ms. Sandermeyer if we have anything to announce relevant to our meeting tonight?
Reached out to the city and provided email addresses, so over our residents were provided the noticing and also...
Leo or someone is on microphone. Corinna, the mic is yours, I think.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Chair Barnes and Commissioners. So I just want to update you on the City Council meeting tomorrow night. So that we'll be talking about the Santa Cruz Avenue street closure and the temporary outdoor use permits, use permits program, and then they will also be talking about City Council priorities. I don't have any other updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sandermeyer. Any questions from Commissioners? All right, we'll start the evening then with public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed under the consent calendar. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. Mr. Tapia, do we have any public comment? Oh, I neglected to say for those who would like to make public comment, on the right side of your screen on this GoToWebinar system should be a, an icon of a hand. If you click on the hand, that will alert staff that you would like to speak. So we'll give a few seconds for someone who might wish to speak tonight on a non-agendized item to, to use that icon.
Good evening, Chair. I do see a question, but I believe it's related to an item that will be presented later on. So I don't know if you would like me to let that be for now, or if you would like the speaker to have a chance to address their comment or question?
I should be more specific. So we have no consent calendar tonight, which is usually just the approval of minutes. We have two public hearing items. One is 321 Nova Lane in the Willows, and the other is El Comino Real in Cambridge, a request for a use permit and for a relatively extensive project. Those are the two items that are on tonight. So if you have a comment on something other than those two comments, other than those two items, the one remaining item later tonight, we will speak, we will discuss the initial design for 101 Terminal Avenue, which is the proposed Onetta Harris Community Center. So for the speaker who has indicated a question, if those are, if you have a question that is not related to those three projects, you have three minutes to speak. Do we have a name, Mr. Tapia?
Yes, we do, Chair. It, I believe, forgive me if I'm mispronouncing this, it's, I believe it's Durham Rai? It's regarding one of the projects listed, but again, if you would like...
Oh, yes. I think we have a, an email from that name, so Mr. Rai, if we're correct, then you would speak at the beginning of that item. Is that all right?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so if we have no other hands raised, Mr. Tapia?
That's correct, Chair. There are no other questions or comments at this time.
All right, thank you. Then we'll close public comment, move on to the consent calendar. And as I just mentioned, we actually don't have a consent calendar item tonight. So we'll move right ahead to our two public hearing items. So the first item is a use permit request from Chelsea Bright regarding 321 Nova Lane. This is a request for a use permit to demolish an existing one-story, single-family residence and detached garage and construct a new two-story residence with attached garage on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width and area in the R1U Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District. And again, this is in the Willows. So Mr. Turner, I believe this is your project. You have any updates or additional information prior to our discussion?
Yes, good evening, Chair Riggs and Commissioners. I do have an update. We did receive two additional emails after the publication of the staff report. The emails were sent directly to the commission, but I will also read the emails during the public comment period. Generally, the emails expressed concern with the proposed height of 27 feet of the proposed residence and requested that it be lowered to 26 feet in height. In addition, there were some other requests for modification to windows and screening trees. Additionally, both emails, there was an attached letter signed by several, if not all, the members of the neighborhood along that Nova Lane cul-de-sac, expressing the same concerns. That is all I have to update, and I'm willing to take any questions the commission may have.
All right, thank you so much. And before we go to public comment, do Commissioners have any questions, Mr. DeCarty?
Yeah, just to clarify, this project is before us because it is a substandard lot due to width, and it's substandard by four feet. If the lot was four feet wider, this would not be before us. Is that correct?
Mr. Turner, I'll let you answer, though I think I know the answer.
That is correct, with one caveat. The, the lot is substandard in both width and area. So if the project or if the lot was four feet wider and had a substandard size of 7,000 square feet in the R1U district, the project would not require a use permit.
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah, so I will add that the area is more than, the total lot area, as I recall, is more than a little bit shy of the lot minimum. Is that correct, Mr. Turner?
That is correct. I don't have the number off the top of my head in front of me, but it is listed in this staff report. Let me hold...
No, I apologize. I thought I had it in front of me also, and I don't. The lot size is 6,100 in lieu of 7,000, so it's not just a matter of a couple of hundred square feet, sure. All right, with that, with that, let me suggest that we have, that we have the applicant make the presentation before I go to public comment in the hope that this will confirm, benefit, or enlighten the comments to come. So would, would Ms. Bright be present to, to present the project? Mr. Tapia, I should note that I don't have a screen right now.
Chair Riggs, yes, I was going to inquire, is there any way you can turn on your webcam?
Yes, which I thought had been on, so let me find it. Have I not been on up until this point?
Not up until this point.
Oh, how disappointing. All right.
There you are.
There we go.
And also, if I may add, Chair, I believe now the GoToMeeting system can support up to nine screens. So if you'd like, you can have all the Commissioners on the screen at once.
Oh, all right. Well, that sounds like there's some more flexibility. Perhaps what we're most interested in, of course, is to keep continuous and contemporaneous audio, which we weren't able to do yesterday. I mean, last week with several speakers. So we'll know soon. So again, apologies. Is Ms. Bright going to make a presentation for, for this project?
Can you hear me right now?
Yes.
Oh, perfect, beautiful, thank you. I'm connected via phone, so I wasn't sure if people could hear me. I was unmuted on my phone, but not on the computer. Okay, so thank you for having us here tonight, Commissioners. My name is Chelsea Bright, and I am currently the Development Coordinator for Thomas James Homes. I'm joined here tonight by Deanne Green, our Director of Development, Hannah Felber, our Planning Manager, as well as Jill Williams, our Architect with KPGY. So we are planning a 2,700-square-foot house on this lot. It will be in the Craftsman style. We are planning on removing three trees, all of which have had health issues. So anything that we're removing, we're planning on replanting again. We really want to maintain the landscape as much as possible. We chose the Craftsman style because when we looked at the houses along Nova Lane, even though they are in a ranch style, there was a mixture of materials with battened board as well as stucco, et cetera. So we felt that it would, it would mix in with the eclectic material style of that lane and with the neighborhood as a whole. When we were designing the home, we really took privacy into consideration from the way that we stepped back the second story from the front scape and from the side. The rear setback is almost 30 feet. Two raising window sills, we've planted laurel nodulus hedges along the left and right sides, more on the right than on the left, but it's an evergreen tree that grows at least seven feet wide in canopy in the hopes that we can maintain privacy for the two one-story homes that are to the left and to the right of us. And we're here for any questions.
All right, thank you. So that's perfect segue into our public comment period. Again, for those who are watching digitally attending, there is a hand icon on the right side of your screen, and if you click on that, it lets staff know that you would like to speak on the subject. So, Mr. Tapia, again, do we have any potential speakers? I believe we will have one.
Good evening, Chair and members of the public. At this time, we are showing two hands that are raised, so I will go ahead and introduce those speakers. I will go in alphabetical order. And just as a reminder, if you can please introduce yourself, your first name or last name. And also, as another reminder, please note that you do have three minutes to speak during this public comment period. And for those who did submit an email as well, can you please let us know if you would also like your email to be read aloud? So at this time, I will go ahead and activate the microphone for, again, forgive me if I'm mispronouncing this, Durham Rai. Your microphone is now active.
Thank you so much. This is Durham Rai. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to talk. And also, I have with me Saber Rai, my wife. So if I go over, I'm hoping that she can get additional three minutes for us to complete this conversation. As I've said in the email, which details all the concerns we have, you all have it in your inbox. We've been raising our concerns regarding this project since January 10th with the developer. And although they have made some adjustments, we believe that our concerns have not been addressed fully, and hence we're requesting for you to consider this. The adjustments that we're looking for is, one is, as you'll see, that the project is 27-feet-high structure, and this neighborhood is a beautiful, charming neighborhood, Nova Lane cul-de-sac, where all the houses are ranch-style houses, and we would like to request that this be lowered to 26 feet. And we are not the only ones saying it. We have attached a letter with 22 signatures of the neighbors over here, four of which are senior citizens, and they have medical, some of them have medical conditions, they couldn't join. So they have signed the letters, and they are fully in support of this, that the structure will be lowered on the lane. So this is really important for us to have, you know, the looking field of the neighborhood, and the height is beyond what our neighborhood is, it looks like. So that's one primary concern that we're raising. The second is, as you'll see in the email, if you have it in front of you, we have privacy concerns specific to our house. We are in an adjacent house to this property. We are a 331 Nova. And the windows at the south-left window corner and the west rear corner, those two are overlooking our house. We have pictures attached where the sill of the windows is at five feet, and we have consistently and repeatedly requested, which have not been honored, that this be raised to six feet instead of five feet. Three of the windows, we would like to request that they be raised to five, six feet high instead of five feet, so that they are not at the eye level. It's really important. We have two little kids, and they're overlooking our kitchen, our dining room, and also our backyard. So it has documented, the three windows are documented, so I won't go over that. It's the south-left windows and the west rear. Also, in addition to that, we would like for the windows to be opaque, so that it doesn't look through towards our side. All the windows, we would like them to be opaque. And, and also, we have presented in that the plan where there's a fence, and we would like to request laurel nodulus, the evergreen trees to be planted all along where our front, our backyard, you know, the windows overlook our backyard, so we'd like to request that. And the light from the stairwell window comes right into our dining room as per the plan, so we'd like the stairwell window to be removed altogether or to be opaque, so that we, you know, we don't have any... Although there is a tree in front of it, it will not grow to the height expected. And I know I'm running out of time, so hopefully you'll give us additional three minutes. My wife is here next to me. Um, in, in the area between the, so those are the primary concerns, where we are suggesting the stairwell window be removed altogether, because it's really overlooking our kitchen as well as our windows in our dining area. And if you're not able to do that, we really hope that you do, but that stairwell window will totally be opaque, so that the light doesn't come in, and also, you know, that there's privacy maintained. In addition to that, I wanted to document this, point number four that we have made, that we have a garage space between the two garages, the 321 property and 331 ours. It is a common area. There are two gates going into that area where there's only 46 inches of space. And once the fence goes through it, we will only have about 20, almost 20, 19, 20 inches after the fence is raised. We won't be able to go on our side of the garage, so the builder has agreed to work with us. And they have not documented how they work with us, so that they can be flexible to help us with, you know, the fence and how it would go behind our garage, even to paint it or maintain it, and it's a concern for us. So that's the fourth concern we raised. We also want to raise a concern that is not listed in the document, which my wife and I have been talking about with the neighbors. The 22 neighbors here have also raised this concern that we have 19 kids on this lane. It's a cul-de-sac, and there are 19 kids on the lane. And there will be construction, not only for this property, but TJ Homes will also start construction on the Gilbert property, which is two houses down soon. So for six to nine months, there'll be construction on our cul-de-sac, and there will be trucks going in and out. That is a reality. And the only way the trucks will turn around will be to go through the end of the cul-de-sac and back. So we are requesting, in addition to everything documented in the email, that you build, put conditions on the builder to have speed bumps, at least two speed bumps on our lane, so that, you know, because of the kids, they're, the trucks going in and out, they don't speed, and there is limitation on how they will, you know, it will be hard to control with 19 kids on the lane all the time over the weekends and evenings. So we would really request for you to put two speed bumps. And lastly, the attached letter, I already mentioned. All our neighbors are concerned, many of which couldn't join, some of which are on the call. They are fully in support. You have 22 signatures, and everybody is in, on board that you be very mindful of our requests of privacy as well as reducing the height of the structure itself. Thank you so much for taking our comments and consideration.
All right, thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Rai. And, Mr. Tapia, we have a second speaker.
That is correct, but before I let the next speaker speak, Chair, if I may, can we request that all the Commissioners show their webcam at this time, so the members of the public and staff and any attendees can see them?
Please. Might as well take advantage of our technological ability, and I'd like to take a moment to welcome Mr. Barnes, our sixth Commissioner present tonight.
Okay, if I may, Chair, I will go ahead and activate the microphone for a Jordan McDonald. Again, just as a reminder, you have three minutes to speak, and if you can please introduce your first name, last name, your address, your political jurisdiction in which you live in, or your organization affiliation. At this time, Jordan McDonald, your microphone is now active.
Thank you, and I appreciate the chance to speak tonight. Jordan McDonald lives next door on the other side of the proposed project at 311 Nova Lane. We are, I was the other one who sent an email with that same signed letter from our neighbors, so thank you for bringing that up. Due to the way our house is oriented in regards to the proposed project of 321, we have less challenge with windows overlooking our outside property. Certainly, our neighbors at 331 have a lot more challenge because of the way their backyard is oriented. But we are concerned just about privacy in general. We have young kids, and we're also outside a lot. Hence, the request in terms of the height of the structure, lowering it from currently designed 27 feet to 26 feet. The builder has rechanged some design items for us in regards to privacy, so I do want to mention that and thank them. They've changed some windows at our request, as much as they were able to on our side of the proposed development. We are, of course, the house between both of the developments that are going up, so being a one-story house and soon to have two-story houses next to us, privacy is a major concern of ours. In addition, of course, we have two young kids who do play out on the cul-de-sac, and so to echo Darwin Sadbera's request of something to control the traffic flow when we have lots of construction happening on this street. If it's speed bumps, temporary or permanent, or if there is another satisfactory solution to control the traffic flow, just run out into the street, and they don't always look, so we want to make sure that we keep it as safe as possible. That's all for my public comments. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak, and thank you. Have a good night.
All right, thank you. I do have a follow-up question for staff. And, Mr. Turner, I wonder, could you tell me that, has the height been discussed at, at your desk, the height of this project? And I will note that 28 feet is the, is the allowed height of the building, and 27 is being offered. But did you discuss at all any further adjustment to the, to the building height?
Staff was aware of these concerns. Several of the neighbors reached out to me as well as the applicants during the review process. And any concerns I was aware by forwarded to the applicant. One thing to note is that the project is in the flood zone, so there are requirements for, for the finished floor to be built a foot above the base flood elevation at what we call the design flood elevation. I know that was a design consideration on the part of the applicant, but any, any additional concerns were, you know, forwarded from me to the applicant and left for the applicant to discuss with the neighbors.
All right, thank you. And then regarding privacy, maybe what, what comes to my mind most significantly is, as often it does with me, that the windows at the stairwell. Were you able to evaluate, Mr. Turner, the positioning and bulk of the laurel tree with an, with an eye toward views to existing windows?
I was able to evaluate the plans based on the information given to me. I don't believe I had the exact pictures that were provided as part of Mr. Rai's email, so it would have been difficult to really evaluate the, the views from, from that stairwell to their, their backyard in that context. We did see that there, that the applicant is proposing that screening tree right in front of the stairwell, and staff believed that that was adequate to, to alleviate the the privacy impact from the stairwell window.
A similar question regarding the 331 side of the project. The new bay laurels that would be planted along the property line. In your review, were they positioned so that they would help screen the new two-story windows from the existing project?
Yes, those screening trees were, were taken into consideration as well. There are existing trees on the neighboring property. There's a heritage tree, which the neighbor is now going to remove, that would have provided some screening for the, for the bedroom number two windows specifically, if you look at the floor plans. Since the neighbor is now removing that tree, the heritage tree removal application has been removed, the applicant replaced sort of that screening on their property with the three trees, particularly bedroom two.
So that tree is on the neighbor's property and is being removed by the neighbor?
Tree, tree number two, if you look at the... Tree number two, if you look at the harbor's report and the site plan, tree number two is on the neighboring property. My understanding is that the applicant and the neighbor worked together to apply for a heritage tree removal permit because the tree was dead and it would be impacted by the project. So the removal was approved for the neighboring property and they'll be required to replace the value of this tree on their property. But to make up for some of the screening lost from that tree, the applicant offered to plant the three trees on their property.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that insight. Commissioners, I think, given that we are all on screen, I'll ask for raised hands for those who would like to speak to the issue. And so that would be Mr. Cale.
Chair, I apologize for the intrusion, but I believe the public comment, I was not sure if it was closed yet, the period, the public comment.
Mr. Tapia, I did not say the magic words. So if there are no other hands raised and no other comments waiting, Mr. Tapia, if you can confirm that.
There were none, but it appears one of the previous commenters has raised their hand again.
We do limit three minutes per person in order to keep our projects moving. But we will, we will be discussing the items that were brought up. I would like to close public comment at this time.
Chair, before I let you go, I did want to let you know that there were two emails that I believe Chris Turner was going to read aloud that were sent in.
Oh, I apologize. Chris, are you there? Yes.
Yes. Sorry about that. Yes, so these were the two letters, two emails sent in by the two speakers we heard. This first one is from Mr. McDonald, which says, Dear Planning Commission, we wanted to get in touch in advance of the meeting on Monday, October 5th. On the agenda is the proposed house at 321 Nova Lane. We live next door at 311 Nova Lane. Thus far, the developer, Thomas James Holmes, has been receptive to our requests for modifications with regards to maintaining privacy. One item that we wanted to be sure to raise with the planning commission is the overall height of the structure currently at 27 feet. At this height, the structure will dwarf all surrounding single-story structures and impinge on privacy. We understand that a two-story dwelling is permitted, so accept that. Our request is to have the structure height be 26 feet maximum. To that end, we, as well as our neighbors at 331 Nova Lane, discussed with all of our neighbors on our cul-de-sac who signed the attached letter. We look forward to hearing the commission's opinion on this Monday. Sincerely, Jordan McDonald and reto Chitkara.
All right. Thank you. And there was a second letter as well?
The second letter. If I can have control of the mouse phone, please. Okay. You have it, Chris. It's being a bit finicky. Okay. This was the attached letter that came with the email. It says, Dear Planning Commission, we are collectively writing to you as residents of Nova Lane as we are concerned about the proposed construction plan for 321 Nova Lane. The proposed house will be 27 feet high and that is not in line with this neighborhood. There are mostly ranch-style, single-story houses in our neighborhood and this will change the aesthetics and charm of the lane. We are all requesting you to consider changing the height of the structure to be at or less than 26 feet. We are also very concerned about the privacy of our neighbors at 311 Nova as well as 331 Nova. 311 Nova will essentially be boxed in between two-story houses being built on both sides of their single-story house. And our neighbors at 331 Nova will not have privacy as the proposed plan has several windows on the second floor overlooking their kitchen, dining room, as well as their backyard. Please consider making appropriate changes to ensure privacy by planting additional trees along the fence, making the windows opaque and raising the window sill height. We love our neighborhood and many of us believe, many of us have lived here for decades. We would like to see the charm of this family-friendly lane be preserved. Thanks for your consideration, Nova Lane residents. And here are the signatures of the Nova Lane residents. And then this email is from Mr. Rye, who we also heard from this evening. This is, Dear Planning Commission, we have privacy concerns around the proposed plan for 321 Nova Lane. We wanted to provide details of our concerns ahead of the planning commission meeting on 10/5/2020 at 7:00 PM Pacific Standard Time. We do plan to, we do plan on joining the meeting to go over these concerns. We have been raising our concerns directly with the builder, owner, TJ Holmes, since January 10th, 2020. In the package submitted by the builder to the city, they claimed to have clarified privacy issues with us, 331 Nova Lane, with an attachment to the staff report. But in reality, we have had to go back and forth for eight months with some of the emails from us never responded to by them. Although the few adjustments they have made are appreciated, our privacy concerns are not fully addressed in the current proposed plan. In our last email exchange with the builder, they mentioned that they will not be taking any further steps to mitigate our concerns outlined below. There are mostly ranch, single-story houses in our cul-de-sac and the proposed plan will change the aesthetics and charm of the street. We request that the total height of the structure be at or less than 26 feet. The current plan shows 27 feet. Two, we have privacy concerns due to the two south-facing, the two south-left windows and one west rear window on the second floor, their bathroom. These windows will be overlooking our backyard as well as our kitchen and the dining area as we have windows there. The attached pictures show the concerning areas. We have two little kids and spend a lot of time in these areas and we have privacy concerns. We request that, one, the sill height of these three windows be raised to six feet. So it's not at eye level. Currently at five feet, it's lower than the average height of an adult and we don't feel it, and we don't feel comfortable knowing we won't have privacy. Two, we request that all these three windows be opaque. Three, we request that additional laurel snobilis, evergreen trees be planted along the fence line to cover the entire area between our main house and our garage to provide additional privacy area circled in the attached pictures. Three, the light from the stairwell will go straight into our kitchen and the dining area, which is concerning. Although a laurel snobilis tree has been added in front of this window for privacy, it is a slow-growing tree and achieves only four to six inches per year. It will take quite some time to reach the height to cover the window. We request that the stairwell window be removed altogether or it should be fully opaque. Or the area between our detached garage and the 321 current garage doesn't have any fence. Instead, there are two fence gates, one from each property, opening into this common area as shown in the attached pictures. In the 321 proposed plan, the garage will be removed altogether and the fence will be pulled to the back. Since this is a unique grandfathered common area, 46 inches wide, once the fence is pulled, it will leave only 23 inches between the fence and our garage. The builder has agreed that they will solve for this at the time of build. Their team will be working with us further on the process of replacing the fence and the gates such that we have enough room to go on the side of our house. As you will see from the attached letter signed by 22 neighbors, some of them have lived here for over four decades. These are shared community concerns. We will appreciate it if you can please consider these changes to address our concerns. Thanks, Zabera and owners and residences 331 Nova Lane. And they have their supporting pictures. The dining room. The backyard. We request the window sill be raised to six feet as these windows will be overlooking our backyard as well as our kitchen and dining room area. We request the window sill height be raised to six feet as this window will be overlooking our backyard. Request additional laurel snobilis trees along the fence line to provide privacy to our backyard. Common area between the two garages, fence will leave only 23 inches between the fence and our garage. Common area between the two garages, fence will leave 23 inches between the fence and current garage. Fence lines too close to our house, builder has agreed to work with us during construction to find a solution. And then this was the letter that was also attached to Mr. McDonald's email.
Thank you, Chris. Do we have any other communications to be read into the record?
Thank you, Chair Riggs. We do have a couple of comments submitted by the applicant, Mr. Ray. I don't know if you would like me to read those aloud?
By the applicant or Mr. Ray?
Forgive me, the member of the public.
In this case, as we are still rather confirming our format and have not actually addressed this issue of multiple comments, I would like to allow that one more comment each, brief comment each be allowed as a follow-up. Even though this is passing the intention of the three-minute limit, why don't we go ahead and do that tonight? If you would, Mr. Tapia.
Okay, I can either go ahead and read the comments that were provided, or if you would like to announce to the attendees if they would like to utilize the hand icon to go ahead and speak again.
We won't be doing a second round of speaking. That is not in our format and that is not how we work. And we have a three-minute limit. But the written comments introduced for this evening, since we have not had a chance as a commission and with staff to discuss additional commentary that is inserted through the technology, why don't we go ahead, if you would, if these are brief comments, and read them with notice of the writer?
Okay, I will go ahead and read these. These comments are from Mr. Ray. The first one states, I would like to highlight that both floors are nine feet high. If they lower one of them to eight feet, they will be able to lower the height to 26 feet. Second comment reads, the tree is not at our 331 property, it is on 321 property. Just the roots and branches are coming to our side. And then the last comment, once the tree is removed, we would request new trees be planted. Thanks. So that is all the comments that I have at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tapia. With that, we can more properly close public comment. And I will go back to Mr. Cale.
Thank you. I have some questions for the applicant or the architect, if they are available?
Yes.
Great.
I am, as well as Jill Williams.
I'm sorry?
Both I am available as well as Jill Williams, our architect.
Oh, great. I have a few questions regarding the height and how we get the height and then a few materials questions. So the roof pitch at the upper level is 3.5, 3 and 1/2 and 12, and the lower level is 4 and 12. What's the reason for the different pitches?
Just to keep that upper roof as shallow as possible.
So it's a height consideration?
Definitely a height and a dimension of attic.
Did you, oh, I see. Did you ever have it at 4 and 12 on the upper part or is it always 3 and 1/2?
Um, I believe it's been 3 and 1/2.
Okay. Did you consider breaking up the second floor roof in some manner? Because it's a very wide front across there. That would help with the height.
It would and been exchanging some messages with the team. That is a possibility for us to relook at that roof massing and that of spanning side to side. So that is possible.
Okay. And then, am I correct that because of the base flood elevation and being a foot above that, that's what's putting our finished floor roughly two feet above grade?
Correct.
Okay. In the cross-section, in the sections, there's a note that says 10 foot one maximum first floor ceiling height, but that dimension's taken to the bottom of the floor joist. And then I see another note about nine foot one. So what is the first floor plate height or ceiling height?
It's basically a nine-foot ceiling.
So you have nine feet first floor and second floor?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So that seems it's what's basically setting our ridge height. The windows you have drawn seem to be almost all double-hung windows. And I don't know if that's going to work for egress for the bedrooms?
They are sized to meet egress. They're typically 305-os that will meet egress.
As a double-hung? Okay, I would suggest you double-check that just to be sure because those might need to be casements to meet requirements. And you have fiberglass windows noted. Did you consider wood windows at all or just the increased quality?
They all let Chelsea speak to that.
Yes, so we have considered wood windows in the past, especially since we've taken a few of our projects before the commission. But we have decided to go with fiberglass windows. One, with keeping consistent with our own product standards. And two, because we feel as though the all-ultrex Marvin windows that we chose are pretty high-quality. You, from the street, you can't tell much of a difference between the fiberglass and the wood in terms of their quality. And in the case that we were to put grids on the windows as well, there wouldn't be much of a difference when you're looking straight at it from the street. So we feel like it would still maintain a high degree of quality as well as being an energy-efficient option as well.
Okay, I'll just go on the record that I would recommend wood windows just because I think the neighborhood could support the quality of the wood windows. On the siding material, I noticed there are corner boards proposed, but you also have proposed artisan siding. And I think the artisan siding is thicker and designed to be used without corner boards. Was there a reason that you went ahead with the corner boards and the artisan siding?
Others, from the architect's standpoint, it, it was just the look that we were going for. You're right. It is, the artisan does give us a nicer dimension in the lap. And, but the corner boards were just a design choice.
Okay. And will those be painted, will the corner boards be painted the same to match the siding or will they be painted an accent or a trim color?
Chelsea, I don't know that I've seen the latest color scheme. I would say typically we're looking for those to blend in with the body and not be accented.
Great. Okay. Couple more materials questions. I see a little bit of stone at the front, but not much. What's the thought behind just having a little bit of stone and not either eliminating it or having more of it?
Um. Yeah, because we just, we kind of, we liked it as a porch accent and not to give too heavy of a massing kind of to taking it across, say that front room next to it by just accentuating the porch column and giving a finish to that raised foundation of the entry porch. So again, just a design choice.
Okay. And on, I see there's outriggers at the ridges. Did you consider doing those at the eaves as well at the lower end of the, the raft of the rake?
Um, we certainly could. And we'd certainly be open to that and picking up kind of where the trims and kind of picking up where the end of the material finishes out near the corner board. So we could certainly add those.
Okay. Um. One, one question or one option that might help with the massing is that, that front gable on the second floor, which I think is bedroom three pops out about 16 inches. Would you consider dropping that down so that it has its own roof line? And making that sort of a feature of the house and help to bring down the apparent mass of the house?
The front bedroom there that has the, the second floor, the three windows.
Yes.
Um, we, we certainly could look at that if we are going to rethink the main roof plan. I kind of see there being a gable on that side. So yeah, I think something will change about that. So if we have some leeway to work with staff to rethink that upper roof and can, and definitely look at bringing down those plate lines on that front bedroom.
Okay. And that is the
I'm sorry, this is just to confirm, this is on your elevation, the west?
No, the right, the east elevation, the front.
The front. Okay. The, the three dissimilar windows. All right. Thank you.
Yes. Related to that, the garage is rather tall. There's a lot of space above the garage door. And that whole roof is sort of independent from other parts of the house. Would, would you help, would you consider dropping that garage roof down to help again alleviate the massing from the street?
We could, we'll just have to watch as you're stepping up into the house and you're making that transition.
Right.
That we don't get too low. Well, I guess we're underneath the second floor at that point. So yeah, we, we, we could definitely look at bringing that down. I think our only, our only concern, and excuse me, I'm flipping back and forth to my drawings. And will just be how that eve line of the garage comes in and intersects with the porch.
Right.
That was probably the only controlling point in our mind was not having, as you're standing on the porch, not seeing an eve line come down, but I'm sure we can resolve that.
Okay, that would be one direction. Another would be a trellis or something over the garage door to help break up that, that piece of wall. My last design related question is just the shingle, the, the decision for the, the shingles up in the gables versus the, over the horizontal siding below. I've seen that sometimes it's successful. A lot of times it's not successful. So I just wanted to get your thoughts on why you're doing it this way.
Yeah, I guess we, we liked a little bit of the texture change of having the shingles there. Just kind of a little slight play to it all. I think depending on how it's painted out. Like I said, probably more of a texture kind of difference than it is a true accent. But we've, we've seen it be very successful.
Okay. And my last question was about privacy and referring back to the comments about raising the sill heights or doing frosted windows at the staircase and the, I think it's the bathroom window at the back. What were your thoughts on that?
Yeah, no, Chelsea, if you want to weigh in on that.
Yes, absolutely. So initially our windows were at three foot from finished floor and we raised them to five. The windows that are in question on the left-hand elevation in the rear, one of them is in, it's right above a toilet and a water closet and the other one is above a tub. So we felt as though you would have to stand quite, you would have to stand a distance away to be able to look into the neighboring yard. I believe we could plant more laurel nobilis trees along that fence line because if for some reason someone decides to stand in their tub and look down on their place, at least that very thick tree will be able to give some sort of coverage. So we could add two more in front of those particular windows on the left-hand elevation. In regards to the stairwell window, I know that there was a concern about it not being able to reach maturity in time because of how slow it's been. We had actually received concern from Mr. McDonald's in July. And he requested that we plant the laurel nobilis at 36 inch box. So at that time, it will be a five inch diameter trunk. The canopy will be five feet to seven feet wide and the height will be 12 to 15 feet tall. And for reference, the stairwell window is about, but the sill is 10 feet from the ground and the top of the window is 15 feet. So that tree would be able to cover the span of the entire window and it would be significantly dense. So I'm confident that there would be less of a privacy issue because that tree is there and because we're planting it at maturity. Very certain majority.
I'll just interrupt for a second if I may miss, to confirm that is the size indicated on the plan at this time.
Yes, 36 inch box.
All right, thank you. Sorry.
That's okay. Just to wrap up, so I'll, I'll note that former planning commissioner John Onkin was noted to say that trees die. So we have to think about what happens if those trees aren't there. It sounds like you're not interested really in raising the sills anymore. What about frosting some or all of the glass, glass in those windows?
We typically try to avoid frosting on our windows. Just because we found with our buyers, they prefer not to have the frosting there. And just to have a more cohesive look with the entirety of the house.
Okay. I think when push comes to shove, I would recommend the, I understand your argument for the upper windows, which makes sense in where your sightline is, the windows in the staircase, those are, especially seeing the, the neighbors photos in their kitchen, I think. The, the lower half of those windows could really use frosting, which would help. And then leaving the upper half unfrosted, I think would help a lot. That's my comments. Thank commission, thanks Chair Riggs.
You're welcome. Do we have other questions and comments from commission members? Anyone care to comment? Mr. DeCarty?
Want to thank Commissioner Kale for a comprehensive set of questions and feedback. Extraordinarily helpful. I wanted to ask the applicant about this question of the unique situation with the two garages that are close to each other and the fence and the two feet. And the concern of the neighbor that that is to be resolved, but is not clear. If you could comment on that and about your proposed resolution so that they could have access, I believe for cleaning or painting or repairs.
Sure. My comments might be a little bit short on this topic, but so when we talked to the neighbors, we basically told them that we would try to solve that in the field mainly because it's something that we would have to get together with our vice president of operations and the project manager for that area to go out to site and try to resolve how we're going to fix that fence line. Without leaving enough room for them to be able to get to access their own garage or access that area. And we just, we have not set up that meeting yet, but we are going to set up that meeting. So yeah, that's something that we, we need to work out internally to be able to come up with a solution that we're still working on now.
Okay. I, I attempted to at least ask, can you speculate what that solution is? Do you jog the fence in so that there's more access? Do you?
Yeah, more than likely. More than likely, we would either have to jog the fence in or turn the fence in diagonally at a certain point. Excuse me, sorry. So that they would be able to access that point. It's just a matter of which one would work best.
Okay.
What that design would ultimately be, but yes, we'd be moving the fence inward.
And then I guess this is a question for the architect. Commissioner Kale asked a lot of questions about the, the roof and the roof lines and was exploring. And you were sort of indicating changing the, the roof that might address some of the height concerns. I guess to be explicit, if you did make those changes and worked in the way that you were engaged with Commissioner Kale, is there a possibility that that alone can bring down the total height of the building by how much in your estimation? And/or if you could also come on, comment on what would be the hardship of reducing either the first or the second floor by a foot in height?
So we will be working very hard to not reduce those nine foot ceilings on the first and second floor. That is, that is pretty minimal by today's standards for a clear ceiling height. And so what we believe we can do is if we were to span differently from right to left, that offset is about five feet and we're a three and a half and 12 pitch. So we should, we should be able to get 12 inches out of that height is my estimation.
Great. Thank you very much.
And to follow up, Ms. Williams, that would be a reduction in the roof peak, not in the plate height. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions, comments or follow ups? All right, I will. I will add some comments then. First, I I certainly share the concern with the height of the first second story building. And in this case, it's the first and second, second story buildings in a one-story neighborhood. This has been a problem for as long as I have been involved with the commission. And the solution that fits within code is that a neighborhood that is single story gets together much as the neighbors got together here to sign a petition. But instead gets together in order to make a change to their zoning for their street. This is called an overlay. The significant difference between signing a petition about someone's proposed project and requesting an overlay is that the limits don't just apply to the applicant of October 5th. They provide, they apply to everyone in the neighborhood. And everyone agrees, for example, that they won't have a plate height at the daylight plane line of greater than say 24 feet. I believe my neighborhood brought it down to 19 feet. So the issue is addressed most directly. I think it's wonderful when code wants to address why the sidewalk is too gray and writes that the sidewalk shall not be that gray as opposed to a code that says, oh, because the sidewalk is too gray, we'd like people not to walk on it with black shoes and darken it. In other words, get to the root of the problem. In this case, as often happens in our town, we have two-story permitted projects and they have been permitted for decades at 28 feet. Both the applicant and his neighbors are permitted to build to 28 feet. And ultimately I find in neighborhoods of single story, at some point houses start to get replaced with two-story. So again, the overlay is the by the book method to restrict someone's home. It's also, it's challenging, but it is also the most fair method because that way you are restricting 331 and 311 and 341 and, and so forth down and around the street. However, I remain sensitive to the first two and this commission has regularly, or the first two-story. This commission has regularly pointed out that there's an extra burden on the on the first two-story home in the neighborhood. Technically, this is the second, but it's the same builder. So I would like to propose to Ms. Bright and Ms. Williams that the plate height be brought down one foot. As Larry and I can tell, but it's not as, as easy for just anyone. The plate height is actually much more significant than the roof peak height. You can't even see the roof peak height from anywhere on a neighbor property, I suggest. But the plate height will determine your shadow line. And the reason I'm proposing this or so bold to do so is that it appears that there's an opportunity for cathedral ceilings on the second floor. In which case having an eight foot plate height does not make for an eight foot ceiling, the average ceiling height and so I would like Ms. Bright and Ms. Williams to have a a chance to comment on that observation. Ms. Williams?
So my one, my one concern with bringing, we would bring the second floor down if we had to do that to eight feet is the windows we were just speaking of with wanting the higher sills that would push those header heights down a foot also. And at some point starts to get a little problematic with just having a decent window, a normal size window on the sides in doing that. So it is an eight foot plate. At best, you're a seven foot header, which typically we would not do a five foot high window. So it starts to get where we can't get egress. So we could do case So we could do casements instead of the single or double hungs. But on that left-hand side, it would push those headers down, which just gets hard when we're pushing the sills up. We could get some volume, like in the master bedroom, I guess. Are you suggesting that we would, if we took the foot out of the plate, we wouldn't need to take it out of the changing the roof line?
Actually, that is my observation. Personally, I wouldn't mind your leaving the roof peak exactly where it is and lowering only the plate since it has the most effect on the neighbors. And frankly, the roof line is quite low, but rather than I would have to look for support from other commissioners to make that suggestion. So but if that would make your cathedral ceiling a better argument, then I think that's worth considering.
Yeah, it's, it's never our first choice to do that of as far as just trying to look at how to, you know, as you get to the top of the stair, you always appreciate having that little bit taller ceiling. So we'd have to rethink this, what, what, what that roof structure is to do that. I guess as we were laying out this house, we were looking to to be friendlier to our neighbor, to, to the north, figuring that's where we start to shadow more by peeling the house away. So really thinking about form as we think about having a two-story house. So as you know, it's a balancing act of how to, how to be as friendly as possible and get the most acceptable, market acceptable house. But our, our first choice would be to change the roof line before changing the plate.
Oh, it would?
Yeah.
Well, I guess that's true because you don't lose anything from an invisible roof peak. Changing you. Now, I'm, I'm sorry, I was going to try to get this up on screen. But the the ceilings in the second floor, you don't have any lofted ceilings?
The master bedroom has a high plate in it right now. I'm not sure if the section cut shows that on this. It does. It does show that the master bedroom, the other rooms are all nine feet, and then the master bedroom pops up to about 10 and a half, 10 eight.
All right, but the the other bedrooms could have cathedral ceilings as well.
You could. We are looking at using roof trusses, so it's a little harder. It's a little harder to achieve all of that. And like I said, it starts to change our, our window, potentially change our window heights and configurations, but.
All right. So you would have a challenge, I understand. And then yeah, I see you do absolutely have room, for example, over bedroom two. Not, I'm not referring to the roof plan as I should, but I see a fair amount of attic space, including at the top of the stairs above the hallway. An opportunity for either cathedral or or vault.
Yeah, it should be bedroom two, that I think would be the toughest one. It's the one there just beyond the stair on the side because that sidewall would be an eight-foot plate. And it would push all those header heights down. We could potentially scissor truss or do something off of that, but that would actually be the toughest.
Those are single windows, aren't they?
Yes.
All right, so we don't need the builder's favorite four-by-12 header. As I recall, four-by-six is more than enough structurally. I, I have to say, I think I see some, I see some options there.
Okay.
Regarding the staircase, I also don't want you to have to put textured glass on part of the stairs, but these staircases are an issue. You start with a completely different angle of view as you look through the window. In a way, once you start down the stairs, you have nothing to look at except the neighbor's house or yard. So we have requested in the past various treatments. Given the location of the proposed tree and the fact that it's a 36-inch box, and I do know that the laurels nobilis grows pretty thick. I think you have addressed that issue. And I don't want to miss some of the comments that were made, both live speakers and email. The truck traffic is a problem. And I don't think it's going to be solved by speed bumps. And I don't think you particularly want to go through the encroachment permits and build them. I would ask, however, and I think this would be directed to Ms. Bright, if we could please have a construction traffic and parking plan associated with this project?
Yes, so we will be doing a traffic control plan. Every time we go into the building phase, we usually apply for an encroachment permit at the same time, specifically to to redirect traffic and have our traffic control plan approved by the Department of Transportation.
Generally, the Department of Transportation wants to know that you're not going to block an adjacent intersection. What we're concerned with here is how many trucks are on the street and where the multiple pickup trucks are parked. The electrician has to have a back pickup. The plumber has to have a pickup. Generally, those two have to be adjacent to the site, but we end up with laborers. I mean, one of my neighbors is simply having his interiors painted and there are two trucks, two vehicles on the street all day, every day, because those are his two painters. That's a much smaller scope of work, of course. So what I would ask would be not just the traffic control plan, but a parking control plan. So that the neighbors have a good concept of how many spaces you're going to take up and during what periods. For example, you might have only one or two trucks present in April and May, but come June, you might have eight or 10 vying for spaces. And we would need some plan that you'll understand does not put eight or 10 construction trucks, whether, whether they're laborers or whether they're trucks that simply have to be adjacent all on the street at the same time.
Yes, absolutely. So we can submit that, we can submit a parking plan along with our traffic plan because you are absolutely right. That street is not large enough to accommodate a high amount of construction trucks. And we don't want to block, block traffic or create any problems where pedestrians could be harmed because of the amount of trucks that are on the street.
That would be much appreciated. Thank you. And then I just wanted to confirm that Marvin off windows, those are simulated light, yes?
So sorry, could you repeat that? My connection got spotty.
Yes, I think all of ours did, unfortunately. To confirm that the Marvin windows are, if they have grids, they would be simulated true divided light. This, this means outside grid, inside grid and a spacer bar.
Yeah. Yes, so currently we don't have any windows that do have grids, but generally if we would, we would use grids between glass.
Okay. Right, it's just that you brought up the option, so I wanted to be to be clear on that. All right, and Ms. Williams said that she was open to having the outriggers at the eaves as well as the rake. Do you concur with that?
Yes, yes, I do.
Okay, great. In that case, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion. After which, of course, I expecting some commentary, discussion, possible adjustments, but the motion would be to approve the use permit as presented, but with the plate height reduced by 12 inches. With the parking control plan to be reviewed by staff. Confirming that the corner boards will be painted out in the overall building color. Having the outriggers at the eaves. And at the garage in the front facade, I would suggest if we may, in this approval, offer the option to build a trellis over the door or to simply have a higher garage door. And Mr. Cale might remember, I think we've done this once before and it might have been a full 12 inches higher for the sake of proportion. Other than that, I think you have responded to a number of the concerns of the neighbors. It's my opinion, and I'm open to feedback from others, that lowering the plate height is a notably more significant effort to the neighbors' access to light and feeling of having a large wall next to them. So I so move. Is anyone interested in, in seconding the motion?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We have a second for Mr. Cale. Any, any further comments?
Yes, I have some further comments. I apologize, I couldn't get on a little bit earlier.
Mr. Barnes, welcome.
Yes, thank you. So a couple of things. One is, thank you to Thomas James for increasing your neighborhood outreach. We had talked about this and I see from your project description the level of detail that you've gone through to apprise the neighborhood of your plans, which is something we talked about and it's much appreciated. Two, I am personally friends with Mr. Wright and his wife. That's not going to impact my decision-making on this particular item. I did visit their house. There's two Thomas James projects on their house and I spent time with Mr. Wright. He talked, he gave me some feel of the site configuration, his site and how it matches up against the other site. The concern that I do have is with that stairwell window. And for a couple of reasons. One is it's positioning directly across from their property, Mr. Wright's property at 331. And two, because of its, because it is higher, it's that, it's spaced between the first floor and the second floor, there's a tremendous amount of light that's going to come out of there. And I don't I think textured glass is not an optimal solution, but we've had success with opaque glass and there's opaque glass that can work very well aesthetically in a situation like this. I don't necessarily think that a single 36-inch box there serves because I'm trying to figure out how that one planting of that bay laurel works along there. And I do want this, so this is a multi-part question. What is the idea for additional bay laurels along there? And two, from a continuity standpoint, I would rather see more bay laurels on there. The 36-inch box, the 24-inch box does not make a difference to me. But I think the light that comes out of that, that stairwell on a constant basis is challenging, given the height. It's not a first floor, it's not a second floor, it's right there. And when you, when you're at the Mr. Wright's house, it is quite omnipresent. So the question I'll start with is to the applicant, what, tell me again, please, what your idea is for the essentially to effectuate screening for the bay laurels along the property line? What are your, what have we come to on that topic?
So for the bay laurels, we were planning on planting more from the jutting out area of the fireplace from that point back because that would block the windows that they were concerned about for the bathrooms. And we would put two to three depending on how, depending on how spaced apart they are, because the worry is that they're, if they're too close together, then it'll just become a giant hedge more than a tree. And I know there the ordinance that says that we can't have hedges above seven feet. So we want to space them apart enough to create screening, but not so much that we're just creating this large green mass. On the side of the stairwell, there is a possibility of having two bay laurels there spaced apart enough to where they would still maintain tree shape, but enough to give screening. And it's just something that we would work out with our landscape architect as to the best spacing option there.
Yeah, I know. The spacing, so when you're contemplating spacing in the bay laurel, I understand the part about it being a, you know, a straight hedge, like a straight-up ollia, which is not what you're looking for. What is, generally speaking, the spacing between the bay laurels that you're contemplating?
Generally, from trunk to trunk, at least six feet if we can. Sometimes we can get closer and still maintain the tree shape, but if we can sixty, I think the closest we've gotten is four feet from trunk to trunk while still being able to maintain its tree shape.
Yeah, I, I think six feet is probably appropriate. Distance, because, I mean, they are columnar, but you can get a little bit of canopy out of it. So had I, had I been the first or secondary, I would have put in that opaque glass or requested that. So I'll ask the the maker whether he has any appetite for including that in the, in the motion?
Yes. First, to clarify, opaque means that light cannot go through. Is that what you mean? In other words, essentially, there would be windows that were painted out with the house? Or to mean similar to frosted?
Which translucent.
Okay. I'm, I'll admit, I'm not eager to make that stipulation, especially since it would, it seems to me that the entire window would need that treatment. I don't think, except maybe for the, maybe top two feet, that any of that window is not in some way a privacy issue.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Cale.
As the seconder, I was going to ask for that as well, to see if you're willing to amend the motion to do frosted glass at the bottom half, because there is a horizontal divider there.
Well, I'm not, I'm not 100% opposed. Ms. Bright would, in some way, would that be just the lower half of the stair window? Is that something that you could work with?
Well, we would much, much prefer to just leave the entire thing clear. But if but if it's something that would be for the benefit of the neighbors, then it's something that we could potentially work with our architect to accommodate.
If I may, would the same thing be accomplished if we just did the higher glass? And, and did a much, did the higher sill and just got rid of the lower panes of glass?
I would have to actually look at a diagram on section, which I'm not set up to do. We used to have half-sized drawings under our elbows and we simply don't have that anymore. But certainly, that's an option. Another option might be, I mean, when these laurels grow up, 12, 15 years from now, they're going to be dense. And frankly, six feet is going to be pretty close spacing in 12 to 15 years. So I happen to have planted a laurel 20 years ago. So I wondered, a third option might be in addition to planting the trees, if shutters were mounted at the lower half of these windows. I'm so bold, since it is a craftsman style and the shutters would not be entirely out of keeping. These shutters, then we might put a requirement in the use permit that they remain there for, say, 15 years or until the tree grows to a certain width or until two trees, if that is chosen, interlock their branches. Is, is that an option that the applicant team could work with?
I believe that's something that we could work with, Jill. Is that something that we could potentially work out with the style?
Ms. Williams?
To clarify, you're speaking of shutters on the interior of the house?
They could be on the interior if they're fixed. Well, actually, you know, fixed except for cleaning. I guess they could be either inside or outside. Either would work. Purpose would be to make them high enough, and I'll let you work this out with staff, again, do the, the angle of view diagram. I'm in, you know, no good position to do this. The window just doesn't seem that big that you would put shutters on only half of it. But you would get natural light. It tipped up, you would even see the sky as you walked up the stairs. You could not look down to the adjacent property. So it just seemed an option.
Okay, thank you.
But Mr. Barnes, would fixed shutters angled so that they preclude the view down the stairs and out to the neighbor's first story? Would that, would that respond to the issue in a similar way or a significant, sufficient way?
So I, I appreciate the innovation behind trying to fix this. I'm a little bit concerned that it adds a little bit more complexity to the, to the thing that we were solving for. I guess, let me, let me just re-ask the question. Will you be willing to entertain frosted or translucent glass as an option? You know, that would be my preference. And then shortening it would be door number two. In the absence of that, then I'll just consider something else. But of those two options, or either of those two, pal?
Let me hear from Mr. Cale regarding this, these alternatives.
I don't feel as strongly about it, I think, as, as Commissioner Barnes. I would like to see frosted at the bottom half. The trees will help at some point. I don't know if the shutters are really that great, because shutters could be removed potentially. But if this motion passes without anything other than the trees, I would be okay with that.
Mr. Barnes, would it, again, this window simply does not seem that high, not that big a window compared with many stair windows we've had to deal with. Could we leave, and I'm a little concerned that the bottom half does, potentially, it does do the job. Would, would you be able to back a condition where the stairwell glass is either made translucent or with, yeah, either made translucent or has fixed shutters in place for a given number of years? And/or until the trees are ready. And in either case, instead of one bay laurel tree being planted, it would be two.
Sure, I can get behind that. Thank you for, for offering that.
All right. Thank you. Then the motion is so revised. If Mr. Cale agrees. Mr. Turner, what we've done is we've added view control of the stairwell window, which can be either a treatment to make the glass translucent or fixed shutters that would be required by the use permit to remain in place until the trees grew together. And I'll leave it to staff if you want to put a year's limit on that, like 15 years. If these are irrigated trees, I don't doubt that they will be, within 15 years, that there will be a wall there.
Okay, through the chair, if I may, repeat the, the motion with the added conditions and maybe ask for some clarification on a few of the items. So I have Chair Riggs, first with Commissioner Cale, second to approve the project with the following conditions. One, reduce the plate height 12 inches is there. Any clarification on whether that's the first floor plate height, the second floor plate height? And is the intent to reduce the overall height to a certain height limit?
The intent is to reduce the overall second story plate height by one foot.
Second story plate height by one foot?
Yes.
If I may, suggest adding language stating that this would reduce the overall height of the structure to 26 feet. Is that correct?
Only if we are going to, and I should check in with the seconder. I was not going to put the request to apply to the roof peak, given that the roof peak is not visible from the near half of the lot of either neighbor, in my estimation. I'm pretty sure you have to get back. You would have to be back nearly 30 feet in order to see the roof peak. That's just my estimation.
If I may?
Yes, Mr. Cale.
So thank you, Mr. Turner, about catching the specifying which plate height would be removed. For the overall height, I, I see where you're going and I appreciate that. Commissioner Riggs, I was going to suggest, because the, the architect mentioned that they were already thinking about looking at the roof layout in order to reduce the roof height, that they, that we maybe incorporate that into our condition to to have the applicant look at redesign the roof in order to bring the plate height down as well as the, the front gable at, at front bedroom number three. So I think what that would do is, in, in addition to lowering the second floor plate height by one foot, a redesign of the second floor, the whole width of that, to break it into something smaller, will help to reduce the overall height and apparent massing of the front elevation.
Would that not require a review of the elevations again? Because this would be a rather notable change to go from a single gable to a double gable, as I think Ms. Williams was referring to.
I would be happy to have the staff review that as staff over review.
So is this, this reduction would be the overall roof peak or just the triple window in the front?
Both. I don't know if you heard that. I said both.
Yes. When you say both, are you referring to the triple window in the bay plus the windows on each side as one roof? And then the dominant roof behind it as the other?
Correct, yes.
Yes, I mean, I can see why the applicant would not want to do that. Particularly as we have been, or I did make the suggestion that the absence of a nine-foot ceiling could be made up with with a lofted ceiling or a coffer at the top of the stairs.
I, I mentioned it only because the applicant brought, mentioned they were already thinking about it.
I wasn't sure whether that was to still have the, basically the same roof plan, but different in elevation. Ms. Williams, could you confirm?
So we, we could, we could make the change to the overall roof. At some point, we will have some issues with our mechanical equipment up there. So I guess we'd like to look at it with staff if we could, to see that this change in massing just does give a softer look to it. I think of what's been pointed out with particularly that front bedroom. And that that is more the intent of the roof change than the overall height. So I don't know, am I putting words in somebody's mouth with that statement? But I am starting to get a little concerned with, with maintaining some attic space.
Mr. Cale, you just wanted, if you would just confirm again, that you wanted to lower the entire second floor roof?
Yes, that was the goal, was to lower the, lower the overall second floor roof by looking at another way of configuring that. And secondly, to lower the, the roof at the front gable bedroom three.
In concert with the main roof.
Making that a separate entity, giving it its own roof.
Oh.
Is the main idea that it just wouldn't have that raised plate that engages? At that, I guess we need to look at it to see. I think I get your intent, though.
All right, I'm hesitant, because at this point, I think we are helping the architect design without benefit of sketches and overlays and the actual design process. For example, from the front view, the the left side roof appears as a shed roof, which currently is about two feet below the main roof, main second floor roof. To make that a different proportion, I think, would be awkward. I think when, one does get boo-boos like that. I realize it's just a pair of windows. Ms. Williams, does that look like a potential problem to you? The south elevation pair of half-height windows?
Um, no.
Right?
I, I think that's fine. Just to be clear, I thought we were talking about the front elevation.
Yes, I'm noting that there's, in effect, that stair roof is a shed roof. And its relationship to the second floor main roof would change, I think, potentially in an awkward manner.
We could look at adjusting the height of that also. Make sure that they, I understand that they don't come too close together, that it doesn't feel well thought out. I'm sure we can handle that.
All right. Well, I, I don't want to have the only opinion on this motion, so I will yield to Mr. Cale's suggestion and Mr. Barnes's concern that not only the plate height, but the overall second floor roof would come down 12 inches. And if the seconder still agrees after our back and forth? And then you wanted a separate element at the front.
Yes.
I will say, I don't see a clear and defined need to do that. As you know, I'm occasionally concerned about too many roof lines and stacking of cables. The front of the second floor simply doesn't, you're concerned that that looks massive?
Yes.
But it does have effectively a bay in the middle of it.
Correct.
So I'm disinclined to add anything about, about that secondary second floor roof.
Okay. And with the effort of just trying to wrap this up, I, I agree with your, your current motion.
All right, thank you. At this point, I think unless someone has a comment to make, I would like to call the question. And since we have screens up, again, I will call alphabetically to vote on the motion to approve. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
I think staff still has a couple of questions on that motion. There were several items, if we could clarify those.
Yes.
Yeah. So the first one is Yeah, so the first one is the plate height of the second floor would be lowered one foot with the intention to lower the overall height of the building one foot.
Yes, and so that the overall height would drop one foot along with the plate height, meaning that the current roof slopes would remain as strong.
Okay. And then the second is the parking control plan. So that's for review by the by planning staff. Is that correct?
Yes, please.
Okay. And then the corner board should be painted the same color as the rest of the building.
Correct.
And then there was something about the outriggers. Is that also for painting?
No, that is to to show or reveal outriggers at the eaves. They are currently shown on the at the rakes only.
Okay. And then for the garage door, I think the motion was to raise the height of the garage door. Is it by one foot? I wasn't clear on that. Or to add a trellis over the door?
That is correct. Either raise the garage door height or add a trellis.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't know if we need to actually say, I guess we do two laurel trees across from the stair where one is currently shown.
And just to confirm, sorry, go ahead, Chair Barnes.
Well, just to add the option to either provide fixed shutters at that stair window or make the glass translucent obscure. It's a more common word in glass.
And through the chair, I have one more question. So the the obscure glasses for that would be for the whole window. Is that right? Not just part of because we talked about having it maybe for the lower half only, but this motion includes the whole window.
It would be at a minimum, the lower half.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Barnes, does that sound right?
It does. I do want to give some latitude to the to the developer. So that's I agree with that phrasing.
Thank you.
And then for the fixed shutters, we said they could remain or they could be removed after a certain number of years.
Just going to propose after the two trees were wide enough to touch each other in the area of concern.
Okay.
And I'll leave it to staff if you want to put a limit of at least 15 years on this requirement. We see a benefit to it, but. All right, so I apologize. And Mr. DeCarty, did you have a comment?
No.
I did. For staff, this question about access to the garage, back garage area and redoing the fence, is that okay guidance to work with the developer from your standpoint? Or is that actually something that we would need to be explicit about if we wanted to make sure it happened?
So typically fences are not discretionary and are more of a civil action. This being a discretionary project, there is the flexibility for for the planning commission to condition the project for the applicant to work with the the neighbor to to come up with a solution. It may be helpful to to clarify what the solution might be at this point. Unless you would like to give staff the option to analyze any sort of, you know, discussions that went on between the applicant and the neighbor or what kind of solution may be appropriate. We have in the past required signed documents from from letters from neighbors stating that they had discussed a potential issue with the neighbor and the neighbors in agreement with the solution. So that is something the the planning commission has a discretion to to condition.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. I'll just just for the record, there are pieces of this set of adjustments that we are recommending that I agree with, reducing the plate height, the overall height of the building, the parking plan and a solution for the stairwell with the translucent glass or raising. There are other pieces I don't that we I think are getting in the business of the builder and aesthetics. And those are the elements, other elements of the recommendation. And on this last exchange at this moment, I given the sentiment and the length of this hearing and how well organized the neighbors are, I would believe that the builder will work in the best interest and intent to get that worked out without us adding another stipulation. So that's that's my comments.
Thank you, Mr. DeCarty. And if it helps, I had marked this for comment but didn't follow through. My garage happens to be 15 inches from a fence and the fence is at least as old as my neighbor's house. And it's a nuisance, but I have painted my garage personally and a year ago I paid to have it painted. And it's it's doable. It's it's just not that major burden. I would like to suggest, however, to the applicant and not make this part of the the motion tonight, but to suggest that a a mutual zone of maintenance be established between these two buildings such that there is no fence running down the property line, but there is a connection of the interrupted fence that would go off on a diagonal just enough so as to provide a gate on each side to access this this communal zone. That way, the fence could serve its purpose of separating dogs and children from their respective sides. And yet leave the space in between open, fully open for maintenance with just a mutual consideration for each other. So if if I could just suggest that to the parties involved, I'll otherwise agree with Mr. DeCarty that it looks like this is something that can and should be worked out on site. If I may, I will return to the vote. We had a yes vote for Mr. Barnes. Is that still so?
That is correct.
All right, and Mr. DeCarty?
Just to the chair, Commissioner Doran had his hand raised before you asked to continue.
Thank you. I need to drop my eyes once in a while. Mr. Doran?
Yeah, a couple of things on the question about the fence and the access to the garage. The garage on one side is going to be demolished. There's not going to be a building on one side. So there's not really a communal zone here to preserve. I would be opposed, and of course, it's not part of the conditions to this now, but just for the record and for everyone's consideration for future cases. You know, the problem is created by the garage on the remaining property, neighboring property, being too close to the property line. And I think it's a non-conforming structure. And I think it's very burdensome on the property owner who's doing this construction project to require them to move their fence back onto their property to allow access to non-conforming structure on their their neighbor's yard, you know. I expect when that building was built that there was at least a three-foot setback requirement for garages. I think that's been in place forever in Menlo Park as, you know, since Menlo Park has had jurisdiction over building. So I just think that it's it's not right to acquire something like an easement or require a fence to be moved off the property line to accommodate a neighbor's non-conforming structure.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. I think you make an excellent point. So we can consider that to be an observation on the record for staff. And given that, I'd like to move on with the vote, see if we can conclude this item. So, Mr. DeCarty? Affirmative. And Mr. Doran? Affirmative. Mr. Cale?
Affirmative.
All right, and Ms. Kennedy? We have a thumbs up. And that only leaves myself. I will vote in favor. And that concludes this hearing. Apologies for the length of time. It is difficult in a one-story environment to bring in a two-story house. So congratulations.
And to the chair, I will have to leave the meeting in just a couple of minutes.
Understood. And that will still leave us with a quorum. So thank you for noting that. And we'll move on to item F2.
Chair Riggs, I am I am recused from this next project. So.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. So we'll move on the hearing with measures Barnes, DeCarty. I'm sorry, Barnes, Doran, Cale, and Riggs present. And Mr. DeCarty, too, at least perhaps a degree. So on moving on to F2, this is a request for architectural control, a use permit, a vesting tentative map, and a below-market-rate housing agreement, plus environmental review for demolition of an existing commercial building and a multifamily residential building, and the construction of a new three-story mixed-use building with below-ground parking structure and townhouses. This is at 201 to 211 El Camino Real as well as 612 Cambridge Avenue. The mixed-use building would consist of retail and restaurant uses on the first floor and 12 residential units on the second and third floors in the SP ECR/D, that's El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan Zoning District. This is again at 201 to 211 El Camino Real. The two townhouses would be constructed on a separate substandard lot with respect to a lot width located in the R3 apartment zoning district at 612 Cambridge adjacent. In addition, a lot merger is proposed to combine the SP ECRD lots with and abandon a portion of Palo Alto Lane, which runs behind. The proposal includes a request for a public benefit bonus with the benefit consisting of rounding up a fractional BMR unit requirement to a full BMR for a total of two onsite BMR units. The project also requires planning commission review for consistency with the general plan related to the proposed vacation of Alto Lane, a public right-of-way adjacent to 201 to 11 and to 239 to 51 El Camino Real. A portion of the abandoned public right-of-way would go to the adjacent property owners, 201 to 11, the applicants. And 2320 2239 to 51 El Camino Real. An initial study mitigated negative declaration prepared for the proposed budget in accordance with California Environmental Quality Act, SEPA, as we called. Matt, do you by any chance have follow-up comments to make on the project?
Good evening, Chair Riggs. I do have a few updates at this time. First, I'd like to point out that in the staff report, there is a statement in the middle of page 13 that refers to a main gate and a buzzer system as well as a location for mailboxes. And that information was provided erroneously. And I'd like to apologize for that error. In addition, staff have received two comments pertaining to the project that were provided after the publication of the project staff report, which I have forwarded to you as well as the applicant team. And I shall be reading those later during the public comment period, as was done earlier with the previous item. And lastly, I shall be providing a presentation which you see on the screen at this time. And I will then, after that, be available for any questions following my presentation. So I will transition straight into the presentation at this time.
All right, please.
Thank you. Okay. Pardon me. Again, good evening, everyone. Chair Riggs, planning commissioners, and members of the public. Again, I'm Matt Pruder, the associate planner with the planning division. And tonight I'll be providing a brief staff presentation for the project located at 201 to 211 El Camino Real and 612 Cambridge Avenue. As a brief overview, a little trouble with the screen. There we go. As a brief overview for tonight's meeting, you'll be making a recommendation to the city council on the following actions this evening. First, we have an initial study and mitigated negative declaration or ISMND. And there's architectural control and determination of a public benefit. This proposed public benefit for the project is 0.6 below-market rate or BMR units. You'll also be making a recommendation for a use permit, a vesting tentative map, and a below-market rate, again, BMR housing agreement. In addition, you'll be making a determination that the abandonment of Alto Lane, which is a public right-of-way that cuts through the project site and is adjacent to the properties located at 201 to 11 El Camino Real and the neighboring 239 to 251 El Camino Real property, which is the home of the former Oasis Restaurant, is consistent with the general plan. Next slide. This is the project area. I'm sorry, I'm having a little trouble. Okay, there we go. I went too fast. This is the project area, as you can see here. And it's located generally to the south of the downtown and it's in the northwest corner specifically of the intersection of El Camino Real and Cambridge Avenue. And on the next slide, we can see that the proposed project would involve a vesting tentative map to merge the existing specific plan or as they're abbreviated, SP dash ECR slash D lots, abandon a portion of Alto Lane, and create a two-lot subdivision for condominium purposes. In short, the first lot, which is more in the center and right side of this drawing, would contain a three-story 25,283 approximately square foot mixed-use building with retail and restaurant uses on the ground floor and 12 residential units on the second and third floors. Two of the residential units on the second floor, units three and units, units three and five, would be BMR units. The other parcel, which is generally to the left of this drawing, would contain the two detached townhouses, which would be combined 3,564 square feet. The townhouses are on a property that is low zoned R3 and is subject to different zoning regulations. In addition, the mixed-use building would have two floors of underground parking containing all of the required 59 parking spaces for the development as a whole. Between the townhouses and the mixed-use building, a paseo is also proposed that would offer public pedestrian access. And for the record, the paseo itself is located on a public service easement that is technically within the R3 lot alongside the right side of the townhouses. And then it works its way to the rear of the lot relative to this drawing and then hangs a right turn towards the former terminus of Alto Lane. Moving on to the next slide. Moving on to the next slide. The specific planned properties are allowed for a bonus level of development if public benefit, the public benefit bonuses provided, which would allow for exceedance of the maximum gross floor area for GFA and the maximum density for the property. In this case, 10% of the project's 14 overall residential units are required to be BMR, which equates to 1.4 units. The project is proposing two BMR units, which is 6, 0.6 more units than required. As such, the 0.6 BMR units are the proposed public benefit for the project. And we did assess this earlier at a study session in 2019, specifically July 22, 2019. Additionally, the BMR units would be reserved for low-income households during the rental and for sale stages. On the following slide. Here is a more detailed drawing indicating how the Alto Lane abandonment would be divided among the subject property and the neighboring property at 239 to 251 El Camino Real. The area in green would be ceded to the subject property, and the area in red would be ceded to the neighboring property at 239 to 251 El Camino Real, again, the former Oasis Restaurant property. And in closing, staff recommends that you provide a recommendation of approval for this project. Sorry, I went too fast. Okay, back to the recommendation, that you provide a recommendation of approval for this project. As indicated in this slide, the project provides a visually refined architectural style, modern connection to Spanish and Monterey facades. The underground parking would offer a positive impact for parking and traffic concerns, along with the aesthetic advantage of placing all parking below ground. And the vehicular and bicycle parking requirements would be fully met for this project. And in addition, the two BMR units would be rented or sold at low income based on this proposal, which would provide adequate public benefit. We also recommend that you determine that the Alto Lane abandonment would be consistent with the general plan. And that concludes my presentation. I'd also like to state that not only I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, but I've also been joined by some of my colleagues for additional assistance with questions. This evening, Ebbi Sorabi is here representing the engineering division. Lee Prince is also here to represent the city attorney's office. And Arnold Memorella is here to represent the design review and assist with any specific questions regarding specific plan standards and guidelines. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pruder. I'd like to invite the planning commissioners to ask initial questions, clarifications, before we go to the comment. Mr. Doran? And your microphone.
Chair Riggs, this is Leo Tapia with the staff. It appears that Commissioner Doran's microphone is not working at this time. We can work with him offline to try to resolve this issue.
All right, so, Mr. Doran, we are going to the staff's going to work offline. I'll take a couple of other questions and look for Mr. Tapia to tell me when you're connected. Does anyone else have questions for staff regarding the project as proposed? Or any history or or the use of Alto Lane? Well, then I will ask a question of Mr. Pruder. The remaining portion of Alto Lane appears to be just enough for what was the oasis to cross through to an adjacent lot. Am I correct in reading that?
And thank you for your question, Chair Riggs. Just to clarify a little bit more, what you're saying is the portion that I had shown in the presentation earlier that's going to the property where the Oasis Restaurant was located. You're talking about that area specifically in your question?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Yes, that area. I mean, historically, it was used as part of the alley, and folks could drive their vehicles through the alley to access the Oasis property for parking purposes from Cambridge. It also was a terminating point for a public right-of-way. To clarify that, you know, Alto Lane itself ends at that location where the map had indicated that kind of sort of triangular shape was going to the neighboring property.
All right, so it maintains an access.
It would gain that property, and I suppose you could say that it does maintain access, but strictly for its own property and not for public access. If that's also what you're referring to.
No, no.
The public nature of it will go away.
Yeah, right. It just, it doesn't shut down the connection between the restaurant parking lot and the other side of the lane.
No.
Because it's an odd, it's an odd shape, and it obviously has a purpose.
Yes, and it's mainly to benefit the development of this property, the mixed-use development. Its particular shape depends on it. Yeah.
I could see that most of the lane goes to this applicant, but a portion of it is reserved. And I was just confirming that it does the job, and that seems to be what you've told me. Mr. Doran, is, are you live? Is your audio live? Vice Chair Doran?
Well, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, the connection is not what was intended.
Yeah, okay.
You're stuttering a little bit on the video, so you might want to.
So a pretty simple question, actually, for Mr. Pruder.
Vice Chair Doran, we've lost your. We have lost your audio. May I, may I make a suggestion? Since you were so kind as to note, it's a simple question, could you type it in the box?
Can you hear me now? I turned off video.
Yeah. Yes. So go ahead. All right, I'm not, not hearing anything. So again, Mr. Doran, if you would type your question in the box, Mr. Pruder can read that to us.
If I may.
Mr. Kale?
Thank you. I was not on the commission when this was reviewed previously, so this may be a repeat question. But just speaking about the Oasis, former Oasis parking lot, is that in any way tied to this project? I see this project sort of has a, an entry facing that way. Is there any talk about using that parking lot for this project, or is that not even part of this discussions?
No, my understanding is there's no connection to that. There is a door that's facing that parking lot that opens outward, and the restaurant is close to that, you know, location, perhaps, in terms of where the parking lot is, but there's no relationship in that regard.
Okay. And to the chair, if this is appropriate time, I had a question for Arnold Marmalala, or Marmalala?
Yes, please. Welcome, Arnold.
Hi, I had a question about, I'm just looking at a comparison drawing of the previous application to this one and looking specifically at the the upper level and how that has changed. Did you have an opinion on how that works in terms of being in the Spanish Monterey style and how that works with the rest of the project?
Sure, I think the design team was responding to some of the commission comments about concerned they were split on the Spanish design and some wanting maybe a little bit more of a modern approach. And there was also a second comment about the upper floor looking a little disconnected or disengaged. And so I think this is the architect's approach to resolving that and kind of making the upper floor kind of just recede visually and and simplify from the last one. So that's kind of my understanding, and the architect could probably, you know, clarify further.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair? Architect present? Mr. Tapia, do we have the architect connected?
Chair Riggs, if I may, I believe Doran is calling in, and I, that might have been him that was speaking momentarily a couple of seconds ago.
Yes, I dialed in. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I still have a question whenever it's appropriate.
Please, go ahead.
Okay, for Mr. Pruder, I wasn't real clear on your slide about the BMR units. I think it was slide number five. I can't see it on my screen anymore because I'm only on the telephone. But you said the BMR units would be reserved for low income during the rental phase and the sale phase. I'd just like to understand that. It seems kind of, I'm not clear on the wording. I think the intention is that if these units are rented, they have to be rented to low-income renters. And if they're sold, they need to be sold to low-income purchasers, presumably deed restricted, so it'd have to be resold to low-income purchasers as well. Was that the intention of that slide?
Thank you for your question, Vice Chair Doran, and I apologize for the connection difficulties you had. And yes, that is the intention of the slide and the discussion that I brought up. The main factor here being that this is what the current BMR agreement that we're presenting to the planning commission this evening states. It's reserved for low income in the rental and for sale phases. And so I can't speak specifically to how the BMR agreement, you know, explains that detail, but that is how it is currently framed. And that basically would ensure, the way that it's written, it would ensure that when there is a switch or transition over to a for-sale arrangement, that the two BMR units, the folks that are living there, the households that are occupying, would have the opportunity to make the purchase or also, I believe, have the right to first refusal. And I apologize if I'm misspeaking in describing that, but they will have the first opportunity. And then the idea behind that is that it would be reserved for a low-income household for each of those two BMR units. That is how it is framed in the BMR agreement at the moment. And it also, just for further understanding, the low-income range is 80% of AMI, area median income for the county of Samhita. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of the presenter or staff? All right, seeing none, I'll move on to public comment. This is the section of the hearing where if you are digitally attending this hearing.
If I may through the chair, I'm sorry. Sorry, Chair Riggs, but I believe that the applicant is to present before we go to public comment.
There, that would be great, but I thought you just did it for him, so I apologize.
No, no, I apologize. I was doing a staff presentation. And following that, the applicant team will be presenting right now. Sorry about that.
All right, if you could introduce yourselves, please, again.
Good evening, Chair Riggs and planning commissioners. My name's Yihan Hu, and on behalf of our team, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to present our project before you today. And we would especially thank our city staff, including our planner, Matt Pruder, who have been instrumental in helping us to get to this point and who engaged us in a very collaborative fashion. So I'm gonna keep my introduction short. The community has put invaluable input, and during our study session, we wanted to thank those who attended our open house last year. The project before you now for consideration is better as a result of everyone's feedback. And we've come a long way since we first submitted our application in May 2018. My parents, who are the owner of the project, who unfortunately cannot participate tonight, but I am very honored to be the representative of the project. We've been living in this area for many years with my husband and my child, and we absolutely love this community and will be part of this community for many years. I'll leave the rest to our fantastic architect team to explain our design approach and some of the changes that we made since our last study session. For any non-architectural questions you may have, please refer to our attorney, Land Use Attorney Steve Atkinson, who is also in attendance tonight. He will briefly talk about the BMR agreement at the end. Again, we're very proud of what we have today. And we are trying to commit our project for the balance of the city's need for additional housing, including affordable housing, community-serving amenities, while, you know, respect our neighbor's desire for privacy and tranquility. Thank you.
All right, is there any further element to the presentation? Mr. Welty, I think we're waiting for you in the background.
There we go. Good evening, planning commissioners. I just want to confirm that you can hear me. Mine says that I'm unmuted.
We can hear you, or at least I can hear you.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Stuart Welty, and I'm Principal Architect, EID Architect, Palo Alto. Because we've been designing in the Bay Area for several decades. We're very happy to be presenting before you this evening. Thank you for your time. Our primary goal for this project is to complement the revitalization of the Southern and Developmental Camino Real. We have a PowerPoint presentation that has action and video to it. And so we're just waiting for the connection to be made so that it will begin to move.
It's not responding.
It was at the earlier run-through with the city. It took a couple of seconds to get started. It seemed to be a delay in its action. It works fine, of course, in the office, and for some reason, send it out and just can't control it.
We're back there.
Want to try again? You have control of the mouse and keyboard.
Well, I see my mouse moving. I'm not sure you see my mouse moving.
I see it. Go ahead and.
It's not responding to the inputs of the keyboard.
Move down your up-and-down arrow sometime. That works. So page up, page down.
Yeah.
I see you're moving it.
Yeah, but I don't know. That's moving, but I can't. I'm using shift or using F5 to try to start the presentation. Oh, there it goes. And let's see if it will go down. Okay.
Thank you. So our primary goal for the project was to complement the revitalization of the Southern and Developmental Camino Real by replacing the existing nondescript commercial building and adjacent surface parking lot whose benefits to the community is now very limited. By weaving the new sustainably oriented architecture among the existing environment, several existing beautiful trees, including redwoods and oaks, can be retained on-site and carefully monitored by the arborists throughout construction. An existing jungle of utilities will be upgraded and undergrounded to allow for an unencumbered streetscape. The new building facades will be configured to allow greatly widened, fully landscaped tree-lined pedestrian shopping promenade to wrap around the corner with greater visibility, connectivity, and ADA accessibility to El Camino Real. Looking back, this corner will become much more welcoming and pedestrian-friendly as the landscaped storefront windows provide expanded visibility around the corner, allowing folks to stroll comfortably and safely. allowing folks to stroll comfortably and safely. Our goal is to foster a neighborhood-oriented mixed-use design, providing a comfortable and vibrant transition from the hustling bustling El Camino Real commercial corridor into a more tranquil indoor-outdoor integrated mixed-use lifestyle. Architectural styling begins with respecting the well-established eclectic neo-traditional character of the Allied Arts Neighborhood west on Cambridge Avenue and allowing it to develop a contemporary personality enlivened by modern sophistication. The project has benefited from addressing pertinent comments by planning commissioners and neighbors during the study session hearings. And the architectural style has matured through the harmony it affords transitioning from the formality of the Mediterranean Spanish neighbors across El Camino to a more residentially scaled architecture along Cambridge to achieve a modern subtlety of form and function. The design is consistent with the El Camino Real downtown specific plans guiding principles by enhancing public space, generating vibrancy, sustaining Menlo Park's village character, enhancing connectivity, and promoting healthy living and sustainability. Two residential levels over ground-level commercial space provide neighborhood-serving retail, personal services, and restaurant uses. The provision of residential units, including BMR units, as a primary use will facilitate the city's efforts to address its housing needs affordably. Currently lead gold, the owners are willing to strive for lead platinum, but would like this to be a goal rather than a mandate. Highly energy-efficient NZE design is a natural fit for the project as we will also transition most of the gas readers to focus on more easily renewable electric power, solar photovoltaic generation. Rooftop gardens and plentiful biofilters will recharge the site and underline aquifers with clean stormwater. All but two redwoods will be retained and designed prominently into the native drought-tolerant landscaping and open space promenade. Advanced framing, true divided light fenestration, natural ventilation, passive solar orientation, enhanced insulation, wall sealing, and foundation assemblies will ensure an environmentally friendly living experience for the entire neighborhood. Listening carefully to our neighbors during our series of community get-togethers, we've been careful to respect the current pedestrian pathways while endeavoring to enhance the walkable routes with greater safety, comfort, and experience via Paseo-linked patios, terraces, group and individual rest areas. Additionally, we've expanded on the existing neighborhood entry monuments by linking the Paseo to a new speed-reducing crosswalk adjacent to these columns and new landscaping so that this more tranquil community path can continue as an alternate to traversing directly along El Camino. I'll now introduce our Director of Architecture, Mark Womack, and he'll be happy to describe further the nuances of our proposed design. Thank you.
Until recently, in Menlo Park, the southern end of El Camino Real has not had much visual continuity. This is changing now with the construction of the Stanford project. From a streetscape that was very disjointed and eclectic at best, a new and more cohesive neighborhood will emerge. Due solely to the scale of the Stanford project, the predominant architectural style of this end of town will now be Spanish Revival. Our intention is that this project should serve to enhance the emerging El Camino Real streetscape. And consequently, we have chosen to design the project, a design for the project that also draws from the Spanish Revival precedents. By doing so, our building will strengthen this emerging trend. But we also recognize that our project must create a transformation from the scale and intensity of El Camino Real down to the residential character of Cambridge Avenue. In our design, the Spanish Revival architecture is expressed in massing fenestration and detailing that has been developed to reflect to more human scale. This can be seen most clearly in the pattern and rhythm of the facade on Cambridge Avenue. The building elements are more respectful of the residential architecture of the Allied Art Neighborhood beyond. The project will combine three separate parcels with Alto Lane into a more cohesive design. Alto Lane currently functions primarily as a vehicular route to access parking, but it is also used as a pedestrian path. This lane is unattractive and featureless. It serves a purpose, but it lacks safe and accessible sidewalks and it does not provide a continuing path to travel beyond the end of the lane. On our project, the ground floor retail level is designed with flexibility in mind. Current in both El Camino Real and Cambridge Avenue, the design will offer tenants good visibility through extensive glazing that opens on both streets. Numerous entrances will provide the flexibility to subdivide this retail space if desirable. The primary entrance on El Camino Real is accentuated by a two-story gable that is the dominant feature on the front elevation. This entrance is flanked by large storefront windows to promote the visibility for the retailer. Two more entrances are located on Cambridge Avenue. They are nestled below large overhanging balconies and are contained within alcoves that are deep and wide to emphasize these entries. Within the building break, another entry provides access from Cambridge Avenue into the building through to areas beyond. Just beyond this element, a second commercial space is located toward the rear of the mixed-use building. We envision that this space could accommodate a small restaurant or deli. With large windows positioned on three sides of the space, it will be sunny and visually connected to all of the adjacent walkways. As seen from this walkway, the commercial space is visible from El Camino Real. The walkway provides a direct and attractive path of travel into the site, not only for this space, but also for the residents, as this is the most direct path of travel to and from downtown. The commercial space also opens out on the opposite side to an inviting public plaza. This space will provide a quiet area away from the street to be enjoyed by both residents and visitors to the project. The plaza, in turn, is connected to an attractive and safe pedestrian Paseo that runs through the project. The Paseo has been positioned further southwest of Alto Lane, or the location of Alto Lane, to align with a new raised concrete walkway that accentuates the existing Cambridge Avenue pilasters to announce the entrance into the Allied Art Neighborhood. The Paseo invites the public to enter the site with attractive landscaping and with no physical or visible barriers that would discourage public from enjoying the walkway. The Paseo engages with the plaza as it passes by and then continues around the building. Always visually connected to the interior of the space, the Paseo encourages the community to come into and through the site. Linking up with the path from El Camino Real, this provides a safe and continuous accessible path of travel around the site. Further back in the property, two townhomes are located to create a buffer between the Allied Arts Neighborhood and the mixed-use building. The homes have been designed in detail to reflect the character and size of the homes beyond, while the Spanish Revival detailing creates continuity with the mixed-use project. Finally, this overview of the project shows how the building will be designed to nestle between the heritage trees and to provide an attractive public space around the entire project. No blank or unattractive walls face any of the neighbors. High-quality materials, including the true divided light windows, create 360-degree architecture. The project will enhance and provide an attractive element for the community from every perspective. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have other comments? Mr. Atkinson, your microphone needs to somehow work.
My microphone says I'm unmuted. Can people not hear me?
Can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. Chair Riggs and commissioners. I originally planned to be part of the presentation, but there is a clarification needed regarding the BMR agreement that I thought was important. We did not have an opportunity to review the draft BMR agreement before it went into the staff package. Fortunately, we are in almost complete agreement with the BMR agreement as drafted, but there is one matter that deserves some further discussion. The BMR agreement as drafted, as explained by Matt Pruder, provides that not only will the BMRs be low income at the rental stage, but also will be sold at the low income range. Our understanding of the city's standard policy is that when BMRs are sold, they can be sold at the moderate income range. We have this, so there's a, and we had not had a full discussion between the project sponsor and the city on this issue before the BMR agreement was drafted. We have discussed this issue with staff today, and we believe that there's a useful compromise to be considered. And what that would be is that if the low income, at the time when the, when the project was going to be converted to sale, the low-income renters in the property would be given an opportunity to purchase the property at a low-income price. That would be, however, if the low-income residents chose not to purchase the units, then the owner would have the opportunity to sell the units at a moderate income price. So we have discussed this initially with the city staff this morning. I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth. I didn't get a negative reaction. The city needs moderate income units as well as low-income units for for sale. But I just wanted to mention that there's this one issue that's still under discussion between the applicant and the staff. And I'd be happy, I will certainly be happy to answer any questions about that, but I didn't want to take up too much time. I just wanted to introduce the fact that there is this one issue that's not been fully resolved.
All right, understood, and thank you. And I appreciate that you're already working on it. Do we have any other comments or elements of the presentation from the applicant? All right, seeing none, we'll move to commissioner comments. We'll start with questions, I'm sorry, and Mr. Barnes.
Thank you. So question the staff through the chair?
Yes.
The, is it a requirement that should the project be, it'll be condo mapped, and should they proceed to sell some or all of the units? Is it a requirement that those units, that's those BMR units that start as rental units, must be flipped to for sale? Or could they continue as for rent if any or all of the units were sold in the project?
Thank you for your question, Commissioner Barnes. My understanding is that the sale of the residential units would require conversion to selling for all of the residential units, which includes the BMR units. I'd like to defer, if possible, to our city attorney to further clarify that point. It is my understanding that there is kind of a wholesale conversion that would have to occur as part of the overall mapping. I don't think we can have rental and for sale simultaneously.
Thanks, Matt. Hi, this is Lee Prince, Assistant City Attorney. So the project does include a condo map, which allows all of the units, including the rental units, to be sold when the property owner decides that they would like to sell them. So it would be very difficult for the city to require those two to remain as BMR rental units. There'd also be the issue of administration if the property owner is seeking to sell all of the units to third parties.
But let me follow up with that. I mean, there are certainly instances where you have developments where some of them are owned and rented. What you're saying is, if the step is to sell the units, which would mean bringing in individualized ownership across the board, then having, someone would have to step into the ownership shoes of those two units and then perform potentially a leasing function in the absence of that straw man stepping into those two units. The way it's set up is you can't, you can't just have that because no one will retain title to those two units. And the original operator, the original developer would have to either retain title or sell it to someone else in order for them to go to for sale.
Yeah, generally, that's correct.
Okay. And then to the part about it flipping from, for instance, low income, which is up to 80% AMI, moderate, which is 80 to 120. Certainly, it's the preference of the developer because it increases sale price. Why would the city, this is conjecture, why would the city be amenable to allowing that to adjust up to moderate income between the 80 and 120 as opposed to holding up to the, you know, max of 80 in the low?
So, I mean, it is correct that the BMR guidelines allow for sale units to be sold at, or affordable units to be sold at the moderate income level, whereas rental units are specifically required to be at the low income level. I mean, staff took a look at this from the perspective of, one, there's this proposal for the community bonus development. There's also the transition of, you know, you have a low-income tenant. It would be very difficult for a low-income tenant, even if given the right of first refusal, to be able to purchase a moderate income unit. So there's sort of a consistency equity piece that we looked at. And I think the third piece from the city perspective is the allocation to the RENA. And what we do with whether it's a low-income or a moderate income unit towards our RENA requirements becomes a little bit more difficult and complex. And I don't think Rhonda is with us tonight, but she would be the person to kind of delve into that detail. But it's certainly far simpler from the city's perspective if these remain low, even though the BMR guidelines do allow for for-sale low-income units to be moderate.
I'm sorry, Ms. Prince, it's far simpler for the city to allow the for-sale to go to moderate as opposed to keeping it?
No, exactly the opposite. It's simpler as far as RENA calculations and other things if it's low-income rental and low-income for sale as opposed to low-income rental, moderate for sale.
Okay, understood. Thank you. I have an architectural question, if that's okay with the chair?
Yes.
Could we, so first of all, thank you so much, and I know we're not in the comments, so I'll leave it just a question. But just with that said, thank you to the wonderful presentation we saw for the project. Could I see the elevation or the rendering that looks at the building from the parking lot, basically as you're looking at the parking lot in El Camino Real, that corner there?
I need control of the presentation again. And you're talking about looking at it from the Allied Arts Neighborhood?
No, talking about looking at from El Camino going southbound on El Camino. So you get the perspective of seeing it, seeing both El Camino, the corner itself of El Camino Real and the parking lot?
Is that part of this video?
Yep, I think that was it.
You're talking about this one?
No, so it's the previous one? It's the other side of it, right? It's the north.
Oh, yeah.
Upstream El Camino.
My mouse is giving me some troubles. You're talking about this perspective?
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, thank you. I'll hold my question.
All right, any other follow-up commissioner questions before I see what public comment we may have? Mr. Cale?
Thank you. I had a few architectural questions as well. I noticed in the details, it looked like the clay tile roof was a two-piece tile roof, but in the materials board, it looked more like a one-piece. Could you clarify what's proposed for the tile roof?
We were keeping some flexibility on the final choice for that. We do have the materials board, like you say, that shows the one-piece. And it shows a rustic clay tile, which is very authentic and handmade. So, you know, we feel like that could be a very strong match to the other materials that we're using because they're all very high quality in that we're using. in that we're using the Coratalia handmade-type doors and windows that are very energy-efficient with thermal breaks, but also true-divided lights. And so the roof tiles could have that, you know, either either version really works very well. What we're trying to do with the tiles is to make sure that the scale of the tile is not the, like, the the oversized clay tiles that are really like concrete tiles. We want the smaller-scale handmade-looking tiles.
Okay, and are you saying that the that the one-piece is better than the two-piece?
I don't know that we have a strong opinion, to be honest, regarding that. It's really more about the manufacturer and the and the actual quality of that manufacturer's product than whether it's a one or two-piece.
Okay, my bigger question is what I sort of alluded to earlier with Arnold, and I'm looking at the side-by-side, trying to understand the upper level and why you went with the direction of the metal roof and the darker color. And just, if you can kind of walk us through the decisions on on why it looks like it does now?
The feedback that that we received from the prior supplemental was that the upper floor competed too much with the dominance of the two-story facade on the front elevation, that we needed to simplify and reduce the detailing on the upper floor in an effort to make that element recede visually and pull back from the elevation. I mean, we were responding directly to direction that we received from the the original hearing on this. Yeah, the intent here being that the simpler we can, we can render this in form and in detailing, the more it would recede and the less it would complete, compete with the the elements on the ground floor. This essentially is evidently the intent of the the layering of the building as as demonstrated in the guidelines that, you know, that are used to 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 define the form and the required setbacks and the building breaks.
So I guess the the piece I'm struggling with is the metal roof was, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but is the the idea of the metal roof to simplify and and differentiate? Or I guess, why did you not use a concrete, or I'm sorry, a clay tile roof for the the third story?
Well, the the choice we made there was to keep the 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 edge and the line work in the upper story crisper and cleaner and and to contrast it from the structure that was down below. I mean, certainly, it could also have a tile roof up there, but then the the elements will start to, yeah, it'll be more blended, and there will be less of a distinction between those two elements. As to which is is better, you know, we were just responding to the direction we were given from staff on that issue. I personally think the project is strong the way we designed it, but it would it would also be strong with with the Spanish tile on the third story, too.
Okay, and last question is just minor. What, why do you have that lightning rod on the the townhouses?
Just, just decorative. Lightning today.
Just a whimsical title?
Yeah, just whimsical.
All right, thank you.
All right, other questions, Mr. Doran, perhaps? All right. If no questions, we will have a chance when we come back for commentary. I'd like to invite the public to comment on on the project. On your screen, you will see the icon of a raised hand. If you click on that, it will tell staff that you would like to speak on the subject. We have a three-minute limit for speaking and would call, we call people in order unless there are several waiting, in which case we will go to alphabetical. So, Mr. Tapia, do we have anyone to speak on public comment?
Thank you, Chair Riggs. At this time, we do have a member of the public who would like to address the commissioners. So with your permission, if I can introduce them?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I will go ahead and introduce Peter Edmonds. Your microphone is now. Okay, Peter Edmond, Edmonds, you should be able to turn on your microphone now.
Mr. Edmonds, there would be a.
Now, can you hear me? All right. Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Before you start the clock or let it run any further, may I say that a colleague and sympathizer, Ms. Judy Rokio, is also online. And I would like to avail myself of a flexible interpretation of the timing, I may. So I'm Peter Edmonds, resident of District Three. I hope you have my written submission, which is already out of date. But I will try to summarize a shortened version. This evening, I'm advocating for a small change to the position of the mixed-use building along Cambridge Avenue, which would preserve Heritage Redwood Tree Number One presently on Cambridge Avenue and scheduled for removal. This is not of a formal appeal. I know that process has closed. Instead, I'm bringing to your attention the consequence that the applicant's current plans have for Heritage Tree Number One. That is, removal. As they pertain to the Heritage Tree Ordinance became effective July 1st. My second paragraph excerpts a number of very significant phrases and criteria from the current Heritage Tree Ordinance. And I like to point out that the emphasis is very strongly on preserving heritage trees with specific criteria for allowing exceptions. The attitude of many applicants, I believe, is that, provided, there goes motions, the Heritage Tree Preservation Requirements can be evaded. And that is the case in what we have here, I think. So approaching the situation from the premise that the Heritage Tree stays, then it would be necessary to make provision for its root structure also. I see, I've reached zero. So Chairman, may I have another allocation based upon the presence of my colleague, Mrs. Rokio?
Can you introduce Ms. Rokio? Ms. Rokio, are you online?
I believe she is. I spoke with her on the phone when you took up this this topic, F2.
Mr. Tapia, do we have Ms. Rokio waiting to speak?
Okay, I do see her now, Chair Riggs. If you would like me to activate her microphone, I can do that.
The plan is.
Mr. Edmonds, who I believe wants to take the benefit of her time. Is that correct, Mr. Edmonds?
Yes, that's correct, sir.
Yeah, please proceed with another three minutes.
Thank you. So I claim that there is one or more financially feasible and reasonable design alternative for preserving the Heritage Redwood Tree One. And that such an alternative does exist. It is to optimize the position of the building in relation to the tree and its root structure, which is immovable and which is represented by a cylindrical space 24 feet, 8 inches in diameter, which is the root protection zone. And with a depth that I would like you to assume for purposes of this discussion is the depth of the first parking level below grade. I say that because I believe that redwood trees have a shallow root structure and no taproot. And therefore, it's only the first below-grade level that would be affected. So what would be necessary is to optimize the position of the under underground structures with parking and the ramp that serves them to minimize the impact on loss of parking spaces or height clearance in the in the approach loop. I haven't, of course, done that in detail, but I did consider one specific change, which would be to locate the center line of the entrance to the building on Cambridge Avenue in line with the present position of Tree Number One. I believe that that would entail moving the building 16 inches west along Cambridge Avenue. In addition, the entrance patio would need to be extended in width, broadened in width, by 10 feet in order to encompass the diameter of the root zone and move the foundations outside that root protection zone. Of course, there will be other consequences. Example, irrigation of the tree's root system would be necessary, and root control would be essential. I see, again, out of time, but the other consequences that are written in my submission hold pretty well, as written.
All right, thank you, Mr. Edmonds. We have that, we have the writing, and we've had time to read it. And you've had six minutes to present it, so we will move on. Thank you for your comments regarding the tree. Mr. Tapia, do we have any other speakers waiting to contribute?
I do not see any other speakers, Chair Riggs, but I believe Matt Pruder was to read a couple of comments that were sent to the planning commission.
And Matt, these would have been sent in the second half of today or sometime today. Is that correct?
Sorry, Chair Riggs, yes, that is correct. Today, I had sent these comments, which I will read aloud. I have the mouse control, so I will zoom in and begin reading. The first of the two comments is pertaining to the CEQA document, the Initial Study and Mitigated Negative Declaration. And this comment comes from Caltrans District Four. And it was written by a member of Caltrans, and I will read this through. And then the second comment is the written comment that the commenter Peter Edmonds had spoken about. Mr. Edmonds' comment will follow this one, and then that will be all for the public comments I shall be reading. So without further ado, first comment concerning this project. Let's scroll down. Dear Matthew Pruder, thank you for including the California Department of Transportation, Caltrans, in the environmental review process for the 201 El Camino Real and 612 Cambridge Avenue project. We are committed to ensuring that impacts to the state's multimodal transportation system and to our natural environment are identified and mitigated to support a safe, sustainable, integrated, and efficient transportation system. The following comments are based on our review of the September 2020 ISMND. The proposed project understanding, the proposed project would construct a new approximately 25,283-square-foot three-story, 38-foot-tall mixed-use development over two levels of subterranean parking on 201 El Camino Real and two detached townhouses on 612 Cambridge Avenue. The mixed-use building would include 12 residential units totaling approximately 17,951 square feet, including allocated common area, two of which would be below market-rate units. Hydraulics, any increase in stormwater needs to be treated and contained on the project site to have no impact on state drainage systems. Please ensure that any runoff to state facilities shall be metered at two pre-construction levels. Scroll down. Sorry, there's a delay here. Transportation demand management. Caltrans commends the lead agency in developing the transportation demand management plan to reduce project-generated VMT, vehicle miles traveled. Therefore, working towards meeting the state's goal of a 15% reduction. Using a combination of strategies appropriate to the project on the site can reduce VMT, along with related impacts on the environment and state facilities. The proposed measures identified in the TDM plan should be documented with annual monitoring reports to demonstrate effectiveness. If the project does not achieve the VMT reduction goals, the reports should also include next steps to take in order to achieve those targets. Please reach out to Caltrans if the lead agency would like further information about TDM measures in the toolbox for implementing these measures in land use projects. Additionally, federal highway administrations integrating demand management into the transportation planning process, a desk reference, Chapter Eight, is I believe that might have been typographical error. The reference is available online at the following website. Permits, please be advised that any permanent work or temporary traffic control that encroaches into the right-of-way requires a Caltrans-issued encroachment permit. If any Caltrans facilities are impacted by the project, those facilities must meet Americans with Disabilities Act standards, ADA standards, after project completion. As part of the encroachment permits in the process, you may be asked by the Office of Encroachment Permits to submit a completed encroachment permit application packet. Dated digital set of plans clearly delineating the state right-of-way, digital copy of signed, dated, and stamped, including stamp expiration date, traffic control plans, this comment letter, your response to the comment letter, and where applicable, the following items: new or amended maintenance agreement, MA, approved design standard decision document, DSDD, approved encroachment exception requests, and/or airspace lease agreement. Your application package may be mailed to d4permits@dot.ca.gov. Thank you again for including Caltrans in the environmental review process. Should you have any questions regarding this letter, please contact Laurel Sears at laurel.sears@dot.ca.gov. Additionally, for future notifications and requests for review of new projects, please contact Sincerely, Mark Leong, District Branch Chief Local Development Intergovernmental Review. This is copied to the State Clearinghouse with the Office of Planning and Resources. The second comment from Mr. Edmonds reads as follows. Good evening, Chair Riggs and Commissioners. I am Peter Edmonds, a resident of District Three. I expect you remember me from last year's appeal against the destruction of seven heritage redwood trees at 1,000 El Camino Real. This evening, I'm advocating for changes to the mixed-use building at 201 El Camino Real, now under review, which would preserve Heritage Tree Number One on Cambridge Avenue. Of course, you are all aware that the appeal period from June 25, 2020 to July 10, 2020 has closed. But that is not relevant. I am seeking no formal appeal. Instead, I am bringing to your particular attention your obligation, which I have no doubt you always respect, to consider this evening the consequences that the applicant's current plans have for Heritage Tree One as they pertain to the new Heritage Tree Ordinance, Number 1060. In its opening paragraph, 13.4.010, Intent and Purpose, Heritage Tree Ordinance lists numerous community benefits of mature trees, ranging from shade to enhancement of property values. Who doesn't like that one? In paragraph 13.4.030A, property owners are obligated to use reasonable effort to maintain and preserve existing heritage trees in good health. In B, construction work shall not threaten the health or viability or cause removal of heritage trees, except in emergency as permitted or as permitted under paragraph. In B, construction work shall not threaten the health or viability or cause removal of heritage trees, except in emergency as permitted or as permitted under paragraph thirteen point A point zero five zero, including subparagraph five for good cause related to proposed development, and where when there is no financially feasible and reasonable design alternative that would permit preservation of the heritage tree while achieving the applicant's reasonable development objectives or reasonable economic improvement of the property. For 201 El Camino Real, the property owners have a permit, but the planning commission is now exercising its authority to review the record, I believe. Both the letter and intent of the Heritage Tree ordinance apply. I submit that a financially feasible and reasonable design alternative that would permit preservation and so on, et cetera, of Heritage Tree One does exist. It is to move the entrance on Cambridge Avenue, the mixed-use building, one foot, four inches to the west, i.e. away from ECR, and to broaden the entrance patio by ten feet. Doing so would align the midline with the entrance of the entrance with Heritage Tree One, where it would become a feature of the property, ensure that the foundations of the entrance patio walls lie outside the twenty-four-foot, eight-inch diameter root protection zone. Of course, there will be other consequences. An extended roof of the entrance patio could embrace the trunk of Heritage Tree One, from which any lower branches would be removed. Thus, the trunk would emerge through that roof, another feature. Waterproof seal at the patio roof is not required. A small central earthen bed at its base should suffice in confining and absorbing rainwater trickling down the trunk. Irrigation of Heritage Tree One root system, the root, the root system of Heritage Tree One will be essential. The second floor might need a setback to accommodate branches of appropriate length to the north. On the first level above grade, the residence lounge would become one foot, four inches narrower, and the double doors of the entrance would no longer be aligned with the double doors on the north side of the lobby. The root protection zone would define a cylindrical space possibly extending no deeper than the roof line of the second parking level below grade, which would probably eliminate two parking spaces on the first level below grade and restrict one space opposite some stairs to a mini-space, suitable for that of a Fiat 500 electric vehicle. Parking spaces lost on the first level below grade could be compensated on the second level by providing seventeen instead of fourteen stack spaces. By tunneling to full height under the root protection zone, no parking spaces should be lost on the second level. All of the above are reasonable changes within the letter and intent of the Heritage Tree ordinance I submit. Financially feasible should be determined by comparing the estimated cost of redeveloping the property from its existing status to the one, the to one, the applicant's currently proposed configuration, with two, the final configuration that I am now proposing, not by figuratively converting the current status to one and then to two. I rest my hasty case and will be very interested in your assessment of this little. Thank you, Peter Edmonds.
Thank you, Mr. Pruder. Would you be good enough to locate tree number one on the site plan for us?
If I may through the chair, I'm just working that out right now. I apologize for the slight delay, but we'll have that up shortly. That is coming up right now.
I did search for it, but I was not able to find a readable civil engineering plan. Perhaps while you're looking, I should have confirmed with Mr. Tapia that there are no other speakers tonight.
Thank you, Chair Riggs. That is correct. There are no other public speakers at this time.
All right. At this point, I will close the public hearing. And we'll wait another moment or two to locate tree number one. In the meantime, commissioners are invited to ask additional questions, make observations on the project. Recalling that we are here tonight to provide a recommendation to the city council to make various findings and particularly approve the architectural control plan. Of course, the use permit to demolish and build a vesting tentative map and importantly, the BMR housing agreement. So anyone like to address? Oh, Mr. Mr. Pruder, have you found it?
I apologize, Chair Riggs. I'm going to the site plan. I was looking for the civil sheets and I don't think it's as visually clear. So I'll just go to the site plan. You can spot that a little better. Apologize for that. This is the site plan here. So I'll just zoom in here and I can give you the exact coordinates of the tree number one in question. And if you'd like more information, I can go to the tree protection plan as well. But this X that is located right here is the location where my cursor is, if you can see that. It is the bottom left corner of the building break entrance here.
All right. And now with the planting strip on the outside and the sidewalk on the inside, I believe this is consistent with the El Camino downtown plan. Is that correct?
Yes, the specific plan has this twelve-foot overall sidewalk width that includes four feet for tree wells for street trees and then a minimum of eight feet consistently for sidewalk access. And so at every interval where a street tree is proposed, the sidewalk narrows to eight feet and elsewhere it is twelve feet, along the frontage of Cambridge, as you see here, and also along the frontage of, you know, in front of the property.
Okay. And speaking of the front of the property, did I see that some of the recently planted London plane trees, AKA sycamores, are to be removed on El Camino?
In agreement with the city arborist, one is proposed to be removed and two are being planted alongside one existing. So there will be three. I can just move over here to show that as well. Sorry, I apologize, Chair. Actually, two are being, two are being replaced, but they're being planted in the appropriate sequence. They're set back at a more appropriate distance and three will remain. Two removed, two replanted, the same species.
So there's going to be something replanted approximately where tree sixteen is?
Yes, the same tree will be planted where tree sixteen is. And tree sixteen, as you can see, maybe in the plans, is a two-point-eight-inch street sycamore tree.
Oh, so it hasn't gotten very far. Maybe that's why it needs to be replaced. All right, that helps. Thank you. All right, commissioners, additional questions and commentary? Mr. Doran? Not yet. Leo, are you able to read anything on the panel that would hint at the situation?
Yes, it's showing that Commissioner Doran's microphone is active at this time.
All right. Well, we didn't do as well as we thought tonight, technically. I apologize, Mr. Doran. Perhaps the telephone connection again.
I'm on the telephone, but you can't hear me.
No, we can. How about that?
Oh, okay.
Excellent.
That's funny because you couldn't hear me before on the telephone. So yeah, I just wanted to actually follow up on the question about the architecture that Commissioner Kale posed. I remember the study session and I remember Commissioner Riggs, your objections to the roof above a roof, you know, the tile roof floating above the tile roof below and how awkward that looked. And I remember recall at the time thinking that once you said that, that I could see that, especially on the El Camino side. I hadn't seen it before. I hadn't noticed it. I didn't feel as strong on the on the side street. But I thought on the El Camino side, it was very noticeable once you pointed it out. And I think that the revised design actually worked very well from that perspective. If you had described to me putting sort of a modern third story on top of a Spanish Revival building with a tile roof, you know, I would have thought it sounded insane. But when I look at it, I think it does fix that problem of the roof floating above the roof and makes it appear lighter. So I just wanted to sort of recall that history and offer my opinion on it. I don't really have a question on it.
All right. Thank you. I have to say, I agree. When I first viewed this, these elevations, I couldn't help but think, I'll be darned. They they did it and continued to make, in my humble opinion, to make the project just look nicer. The detailing has really brought things out. And since I often forget to note appreciation for a project well done, and I'd just like to say that now. But that doesn't keep us from making any further comments. Anyone else have a comment? Mr. Kim?
Yeah, thank you. So on the positive side, I think it's, you know, a great improvement for for the area, what's what's proposed. And I love the mixture of the residential plus the retail space. And particularly, I think the Paseo works really well, and I love how they added the sidewalk next to those existing brick pilasters. I think that that's a bit of genius there. The two BMRs are great. I think a third BMR would have been a much more approvable public benefit. I was surprised in the staff report that there was a note that BAE concluded that none of the scenarios provided additional support for the developer, additional profit for the developer. That was a bit surprising to read. I think the the two non-street elevations are actually very successful, the ones facing the ones facing the Paseo and the former Oasis side. Just for my point of view, the two-piece clay tile is a much more authentic-looking tile than the the one piece. So I would vote for that. I'm glad to hear your both Commissioner Riggs and Doran's input on the the third floor. It 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 seemed a bit of a disconnect at first to see that with the metal roof. It is much improved over the previous elevation that looked a little like a hotel before. So it's it's much more distinct. I think the metal roof is what's throwing me off the most. I don't know if that really works with the Spanish Monterey style that we're talking about, but you guys seem to think it works well, so I guess it works. So I think the this and all the other aspects of the the project are all supportable to the city council. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Mr. Barnes?
Thank you. I do remember the study session and I remember saying to the the architect, the architect team, expressing my disappointment for how, I think the term I used at the time was not innovative the design was and how it was just another Mediterranean Spanish building. And I think the efforts I've put into the different elevations and the use of the back Paseo and the use of the space and how the, just a wonderful use of Spanish Revival with really clean lines, I think works really well for this project. So I'm very happy to see that. I do want to touch on that second roof and the metal versus tile. And I wanted to, if it's permissible through the chair, to ask the architect. The architect seemed to, the architectural team seemed to be hedging in terms of, well, if we had our druthers, we would have done tile, but we seem to have been driven in the direction of standing metal roof. I'd like to pose a question to them related to that, if that's okay.
Yes, Mr. Welty.
Sure. Go ahead.
We both, we both have fairly strong opinions about that element and we, when I say we both, Mark and I in our office. And so we, we sort of went through that same enlightening and transformation with Mr. Riggs's comments spurring us forward after the study session and and actually everybody's, but Mr. Riggs, I think was the most outspoken about it. And as we transition, as we were striving to find a way to make the building honor the sort of neo-traditional elements, but bring it into the 21st century and clean it, make, create these clean lines and bring it into a bit of a modern flavor. We realized that the metal roof had a lower profile. There's also precedent in Spanish and even French architecture and even some Italian, especially more of modern Italian, where there is a juxtaposition of the traditional older buildings that have been renovated and the new additions you use, utilize a lot more glass and metal. And so we thought, you know, that really actually works if it's not overdone and if it's colored in a way that allows it to recede and not become too powerful of an element. So we thought that it really worked after. And so, you know, we're very happy with the metal roof. We don't have a, you know, I don't think we would, you know, what, be ashamed if we had to put a tile roof on it either. But now that we see the metal, I think, you know, I personally, and I'll let Mark speak for himself, but I I personally really like the metal, the light, lightness and airiness that it that it conveys and the ability for it to recede.
Yeah, I would add to that with the simplification of all of the other design elements on the third floor, reverting back to a tile roof would just dilute the the concept of contrasting the upper floor from the main body of the building.
Right. And then in the elevation that we saw that was going south on El Camino, the use of a different color palette on that third floor. I think it was a darker brown. You don't think that makes that third floor stand out? You think the coloring of that works well, given what you had just just described in terms of what you were looking to do and how you were looking to it?
Well, I think it needs it needs some differentiation in color. Now, you might suggest that that should be less striking, less pronounced. But if it were all the same color, oh, you know, I you could have a different opinion of that, but I think adding the second color to the the uppermost floor helps to differentiate between the two elements more strongly.
Okay. From my point of view, if you're happy with it, I'm happy with it. I wanted to kind of tease out how much you got let, how much the cam or the horse got led to water. And then when the horse got to water, how much it actually appreciated the water.
We were led to the water and we actually tasted it and it didn't taste too bad.
So with that in mind, I'll go through some of the recommendations that are in the staff report, just to so staff can can hear at least from my vantage point, my thoughts on the five points that we're contemplating this evening. One is the initial study in the mitigated negative, negative decoration. That's fine. The architectural control review for compliance with the with the specific plan. Obviously, that is predicated on Arnold's review and and it's Obviously, that is predicated on Arnold's review and it seems to conform with that. From an architectural review standpoint, I think it works well. The use permit, recommend approval of that. Vesting tentative map to merge the existing lots and abandoned portion of Alta Lane and create a two-lot subdivision for condominium purposes. That's fine. From my perspective as well. And then the BMR housing agreement for compliance. I'm assuming compliance is determined by the city attorney. The content of it is as outlined is fine with me. So from my perspective, these five points, I am in support and I certainly would support a recommendation to council. And I am very happy that, you know, you're going underground. It's not cheap. The economics of this particular project, when contemplated, I suspect look different than they do here in the, what is it, the 10th month of 2020. And I'm appreciative on behalf of Menlo Park that you're proceeding with this project where it is with the type of project that you're doing, including the below-grade subterranean parking and all the rest of it. So I'm thankful and you're adding residential and you're doing stuff for the commercial ground floor. You're really doing some nice things with that corner in that area. So this project has my support. Thank you.
All right. And I appreciate the way you put that into words, Mr. Barnes. I have to agree with your appreciative, your appreciations of the underground as well as the aesthetics. So with that, I will invite, perhaps since you just spoke it so well, Mr. Barnes, you would make a motion regarding our recommendation to the city council.
Okay, so I would, I will language it that the planning commission provides a recommendation to the city council, to, let me see here.
You can always approve per staff report.
Yeah, per staff report. I was looking for the background exhibit A, but let's just say per staff report. And certainly it's called out on the front page of the staff report. It's my recommendation is we approve it per the staff report and send the council for its approval.
And do we have a second? Mr. Kale? You second. All right. And just briefly before I call for, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Sandomeyer, did we miss anything? What were we?
I just want to confirm the motion includes the finding that the abandonment of Alta Lane is in conformance with the general plan.
I did.
That was one of the five items, right?
That's what I typed before on there, yes.
Great, thank you.
All right, and just again, so appreciative of this project. It really is going to change one of the entries to Menlo Park and we, I think we are fortunate to have a project sponsor who is determined to make a nice project. I do find that whenever Mr. Mammarella is involved, we end up with notably better projects, but that would not be possible without our architectural team having the talent and the vision. So with that, I guess I'll call for the vote. Alphabetically, we'd start with Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
All right, and then Mr. Doran?
Oh, yeah.
All right, and Mr. Kale?
Yes.
All right, and I am very much in favor of this recommendation. So congratulations to the entire team and thank you.
Thank you very much, Richard.
And the entire team includes our staff, which besides Mr. Pruder, often concerns a number of other staff and and we come through with these projects very carefully observed and worked out. So our next duty, now that we've completed our public hearing portion, is
Yes. Through the chair. I know it's late. I just gotta, I need to take a break for just a minute or two, get some tea, get some water, come back again. Could we take like a two-minute recess?
Absolutely. I think this is the right time. Take three minutes if we like.
Actually, could I, could I question? We're supposed to stop by 11 o'clock. We've got 22 minutes left. And there's a study session on the agenda that I think deserves more than 22 minutes. Should we actually consider continuing the study session and ending tonight's meeting rather than taking a break?
Yes, that was my next point, was that in order to extend past 11, we have to take a vote in order to justify that. And I know I for one am going to have difficulty moving on past 11. I see Mr. Murphy is present. Justin, God, I've missed you. Good to see you. Do you by any chance have a suggestion regarding Terminal Avenue?
Let's see. Thank you, Commissioner. So Justin Murphy, Deputy City Manager, just chiming in about the Menlo Park Community Campus. It may be good to be able for the commission to take its break. I would we have had a number of people waiting patiently for this opportunity. It's going to be a matter of timing and calendars and logistics. We've been really looking forward to this opportunity to get some input from the planning commission. If the commission is thinking of trying to hold a special meeting, I would probably need to work with you tonight on what that timing would look like. At one level, if we could at least give Facebook and their team the opportunity to present the item tonight, that may be beneficial. So happy to follow up with the chair about options that we may have. But do appreciate that it is a long and late evening. So we just wanted, we would need to figure out tonight whether what our options are.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Murphy. And I do recall that in the past where we've had a significant project and run out of time, we have done the presentation. And I would still like to have the three-minute break. But perhaps we go ahead and do that. When we come back, we can just to say that we did, we can take a vote on whether or not we want to go to midnight. Seriously, I can't see properly covering the project in 45 minutes either. So I think that's what it'll come down to. But with that, let's take a three-minute break. And so we would be back Apple Computer Time at 10:44 PM. Thank you. And for some reason, it was easier six or eight years ago to stay till midnight. I don't consider it heroic anymore.
I haven't been on Zoom calls since 8 o'clock this morning. This is like a this is a 14-hour Zoom day. This is like, I'm gonna lose my noggin. This is lose it.
Yep. And Justin, have you had, I guess you've had to watch at least the last hour waiting for us to conclude something. I'm sorry, I did not think that we would stretch the residential project so deep. But again, it is in the willows.
Yep. At the appropriate time, Chair Riggs, happy to talk with you about some potential options that we could have. Wait for when everybody's ready.
Yeah, I think we're past our three minutes though, and considering it's the well, it's the vice chair I need. Ah, there we go. All right, so we are supposed to close at 11 and we can speak briefly about options and how we can avoid doing anything too inconsiderate to the Facebook crew tonight. So Mr. Murphy, what do you suggest?
Great, thank you very much. And we are wanting to make sure that we're balancing everybody's interests, including the interests of the public. So I was able to check in with the Facebook team about willingness to come back for another meeting. So if I could entertain the commissioners in terms of the possibility for a special meeting next Monday, so a week from tonight, where this would be the only topic on the agenda. We think that that would fit within the overall schedule that we're working towards. So we would just reissue the same exact staff report and just this is the only item on the agenda and work through a proper presentation and opportunity to field questions from the from the commission and the public and then get the commission's comments on the project. So that is one option that we think could be viable for the overall project schedule.
You have probably noticed that that would give us four planning commission meetings on Mondays in a row. And as a half-blood Italian, I can't guarantee this, my condition on Columbus Day, but all right, I will play if we can get a quorum, I guess, taking it alphabetically, Mr. Barnes. I'll lip read that that's a yes. And Mr. Doran?
I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, that would be my preference as well.
All right, you guys are volunteers. And Larry? Yes. All right, so it looks like you're on our calendar just like that. For some reason, none of us are planning major airline trips next week. So how would we go about the introduction of the project tonight? Will you be our project representative?
Let's see, would, so I guess with your ability to participate next Monday, I would almost at this point in time suggest that we, you're able to bring this meeting to a close and we would just reschedule for next week. So but if you don't mind, if I could just confirm that with Fergus O'Shea from Facebook. Fergus could come on, great. If he could just confirm that.
Can you hear me? O'Shea, we can hear you and welcome back to your favorite planning commission.
Thanks, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think it would be best, so the project is fresh in your minds next Monday. Thanks for accommodating a special meeting. I think it would be fresh. The presentation is about 15 or 20 minutes, but then be fresh in everybody's mind and it gives you even another week to read the staff report and come up with any questions that you might have. So I think would be best for us to do it all at one time.
All right, very good. And so with that, we will see you next week. Does that no point in proceeding further with our 10 minutes left? I will turn this over to Ms. Sandomeyer though, for our usual information items.
Good evening again. So as we just discussed, we'll have a meeting in one week on the study session. And then in two weeks, we have another meeting and that one has a single-family home on the agenda. And then the annual review of the development agreement for 1300 El Camino Real. And that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Tell me, Ms. Sandomeyer, if this is the appropriate time, but either at the staff level, or if necessary, we can involve the commission, since it does have to do with public access. But I would like to suggest that we reconsider our format in terms of reading late letters into the minutes. This would be particularly in the case of people who submit a letter and then click on for a public comment. In essence, people are given three minutes to speak and maybe four or five minutes for their detailed letter. And that seems to be, besides the obvious redundancy, it seems to be taking advantage of our format. So I was going to suggest that for those letters that come in, well, frankly, any letter that comes in before Monday, it's our duty to have read it. And if it comes in Monday, I would suggest that either it gets read or the speaker makes a presentation, but not both. And what do you think?
Yeah, I understand it's, there's some redundancy. I think one concern we had, I know when someone sends a letter to the planning commission, obviously all the commissioners read it, but the public isn't aware of it. But I think what we could do is post those on the, somewhere But I think what we could do is post those on the, somewhere on the website and then maybe have a link for people to look at. So I think that would definitely be a good option.
That makes sense to me. We used to have a, actually a former planning commissioner who would do a two to three-page critique of a project and send it in about 10 o'clock on Monday morning. And actually she did this for, I mean, they did this for city council meetings as well. And it became of a, a bit of an unfair use. So I think this streamlining is a, is a benefit. I think it's a good idea. All right, thank you. And then obviously we didn't get through without any technical issues at all. It's very disappointing to lose my vice chair. And, and we've lost a couple of other people during the time as well. Is this something that GoTo can figure out with Mr. Tapia? Or is this really a case where we just have to switch? Or, or is it, I mean, I'm disinclined to think it's a bandwidth issue. At least speaking for myself, I do meetings with approximately six total participants every week. And I don't know.
Yeah, if I may, I, I do meetings online a lot too with multiple participants and I don't have problems with bandwidth. In fact, earlier in the day, the rest of my household is online too. And we have enough bandwidth and now they're not so much, you know? And so I don't need the bandwidth problem. I would like to try if it's Mr. Tapia or someone else that could provide some technical support. I'd like to try offline, working it out with and just go on, you know, GoTo Meeting or whatever. And, and to see, you know, if he can walk me through things I can check on my computer or something, if there's some incompatibility. Because definitely the button that I had said I was not muted. And apparently on the other end, I wasn't muted as well. So there's, there's some issue.
Well, and actually this applied to Mr. Pruder. I don't have to say mister anymore. We're offline to, oh, have we, no, we haven't closed the meeting. Okay. Where his audio and his video were having trouble lining up. So I think we do have an issue that's not local.
And we can definitely look into if there's any fixes within the GoTo Meeting. Otherwise we'll look into, you know, if we can switch to a new system sooner rather than later.
Okay, terrific. All right, thank you. Do any commissioners have any subjects to bring up or supporting comments? All right, well, I will get my swing line and adjourn this meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.